Good evening. I'd like to call by order the Morrisville Town Council Work Session. It's May the 16th. The time is 6:31 PM. There is one additional item on tonight's agenda prior to adjournment. We are going to hold a closed session to discuss the term plan communication issue. So I'd like to have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries 7-0. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Jerry. Are you taking the lead on this, or who's taking the lead on this discussion item?
I will do a short introduction and then turn it over to our consultants, who have prepared all your information for tonight. This is the first work session with Town Council for our comprehensive master plan update. As you may remember, our last update was done in 2011. And this time, we had asked for funding this year to do the master plan utilizing outside consultants to get a different perspective on our master plan work. And so tonight, we have several members of the consultant team here, who will be leading us through the discussions, asking a lot of questions, and explaining a little bit to you about our master plan process. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Rachel Cotter, who was with the John McAdams Company, who will be leading off.
Thank you all for the opportunity to take some of your time this evening. Real quick, we've refined the agenda a little bit. So we're going to give team introductions and a short overview of the master planning process. We're going to review some of the demographic and recreational trends. We realize that you've seen a lot of demographic information lately, and that's probably very familiar to you. We just want to relate that to some of the needs and demands for recreation based on demographics. And then we're going to have a bit of an interactive discussion, so kind of a SWOT analysis, which these boards are for. And we broke those down into park facilities and maintenance, park operations and staffing, and park programs. So that's going to be your greatest opportunity to give us feedback on the different elements of what currently works, what doesn't work, and where you'd like to see some improvements. And then we're going to talk a little bit about benchmarking and level of service. So Jerry introduced me. I'm Rachel Cotter with McAdams. And with me today, I have Margaret Bransfield from Proz Consulting out of Indianapolis. And she's really working with the operations side of things and has done a great job with the demographics assessment and some of the benchmarking. And then Michael Vanperen, also with our team from McAdams. So I'm sure the master planning process is fairly familiar to those of you who've seen other presentations from other firms, maybe Greenway master plans, comprehensive plans. A quick overview of what we're going to do as part of this master plan. The first step that we've kind of completed already is the existing conditions, inventory, and analysis. So that's really understanding the current state of parks and recreation within the town. So we've visited all of the parks, and we did a very comprehensive analysis and looked at anything from the condition of the parks, the facilities offered, accessibility, perceived safety, maintenance, and kind of visual appeal. Margaret will talk a little bit about the demographic analysis, but that's the other piece of the analysis component. And we've worked with Jerry to look at some of the operational and staffing, current levels of service that you're providing. So right now, we're moving into the community input phase. So this is really where we get feedback from the community, from staff, administration, and council to develop the vision and goals for the master plan and to better understand the needs and the demands of the community. This is also where we're going to start developing some of the benchmarking and level of service standards, so we can compare the town not only to other comparable agencies or agencies that you aspire to be similar to, but we can develop very specific level of service standards that are specific to the unique qualities of the town. And then finally, we'll develop a set of master plan recommendations and an action plan. So I think it's important to keep in mind, too, that a master plan is a working document. It is a framework to help you make decisions and make progress to move forward as your town grows, but is also flexible, and it's intended to evolve with changes in demographics, changes in funding, changes in recreation trends. So I'm going to turn it over to Margaret, who's going to talk a little bit about demographic implications for recreation.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us out here today, especially on such a beautiful evening. So as Rachel said, I know that you've heard a lot about demographics recently. So I am going to go through some demographics, but also relate it to what your trends in parks and recreation locally are. So this is an overview of demographics in your town limits. One item of note is I know that there was a special assessment recently, and it does have a slightly different number for the total population number. When we have done the demographic analysis, what we've looked at is both the town limits as well as a two-mile buffer around the town. And the reason that we did that is because we know that there are a lot of people who come in to use the parks and recreation facilities and amenities, attend special events from the areas around the triangle. So we wanted to try to capture that and compare the town limits demographics with that two-mile buffer. In order to do that, we have to work from the same data set. And the special census was only for the town limits, and so we can't extrapolate that. When we have our full report in the master plan, it will include the demographics from the special census as well as the town limits from this analysis and that two-mile buffer. So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew we are aware of and are using that special census data as well as part of our analysis. Okay, so as I said, one of the things that we looked at were both the town limits and the two-mile buffer. So the first chart you see here is the population growth as far as the town limits go. And you can see in terms of the full US population, the rate of growth is still quite high. Even though the rate will be declining slightly over the next couple of years, it's still pretty significant growth rate over the US population. I also just wanted to make note of the population of the town limits. 23,000, and then you move into the two-mile buffer, for 2016, it's 100,000. That 100,000 does include the 23,000. But I think the significant item of note there is the fact that you have a town of approximately 25,000 people, and you're serving an additional 75,000 that are potentially coming in and making use of the facilities and amenities of Morrisville. So population by race, Morrisville is unique in a lot of United States communities in that it is a majority-minority population. And you can see that that trend will continue to increase. Looking at the two-mile buffer, it changes the story a little bit. And then in comparison to the US average, it is quite diverse. There are some communities throughout the US that have turned to majority-minority communities. Most of them have greater populations than Morrisville. So that is a unique trait that we need to take into account. I also wanted to just briefly touch on age. I'm not going to include the age segments here, but we are still seeing that same trend throughout the US where there are going to be additional population within the baby boomer generation, 55-plus, increasing over the next five to 10 to 15 years, probably by around 2% to 4% in total. And then comparative income characteristics. Again, I think this is something that makes Morrisville a very unique community. The median income and per capita income are both quite high as compared with North Carolina and the US as an average. And when you take into consideration that two-mile buffer space, it increases even more. So this can give you some information about your budget, pricing of programs, thinking about how to price some of those special events where you might have people coming in from outside the town limits. Moving on from demographics, now we can start to relate that to your local sports, your local trends in sports, fitness, and recreation. So what we have here is called the MPI, which is the Market Potential Index. The demographic data that we use is from ESRI, and they pull it from American Community Survey. They also have access to a lot of other consumer data that helps them project the potential participation in particular sports and activities. So 100 is the average of the US. So if you had golf at 100, for example, then Morrisville would be exactly at what the average for US participation in golf is. As you can see, the town of Morrisville has MPI's that are significantly above 100. And I wanted to let you know that this is really unusual, to see so many that are so far above 100. And what that tells me is that the town of Morrisville is a very active community with people who want to participate in several sports and recreation activities. I recently did a similar analysis with a community that had one MPI that was over 100, and the rest of them were around 80 or 90. So that is something that's unique to you that I wanted to make sure to point out.
Good question, sorry.
Sure.
What's the age group you took from?
It's the market potential of the community as a whole. So it's not segmented into a particular age group.
So swimming isn't up there?
It is. It actually is in another slide. So this is general sports, and then we also have fitness and recreation. So I'll go ahead and show you that one for swimming. The other thing I wanted to point out is that Market Potential Index, when you look at the town limits versus the two-mile buffer, they're very similar. And then finally, I'll show you the outdoor recreation as well.
So who did you poll on this?
This comes from ESRI. It's a proprietary algorithm that they use to project market potential. In sports and recreation specifically here, but they also do it for other business activities as well.
So you didn't talk to any people?
No, this is completely demographics and statistics. Yeah, I think that the statistically valid survey will, we usually use that in addition to this information to really help you hone in on your local market. So think of this as one data point in addition to some of the other community needs outreach that you're doing over the next couple of months. Any other questions or comments on the demographics or the recreation trends before we move on?
I guess my only comment would be, if this is the basis for the rest of the story, I don't know that I feel totally confident in where we're starting. Just some data points, even the special census number was wrong. It's published. We have 24,000. We know what that is. And then the sports that you listed, while they're all, people around here all participate in all these sports, I don't know that you quite have the real picture of what is actually happening in Morrisville. And that's fine if it's just a data point, and it's just one of many, many things that we'll look at. That's fine. I understand you got to start somewhere. But I'd be more concerned if you're saying, well, this is what we're going to base all of our recommendations on.
Right. And the answer to that is it will not be the only thing that we base recommendations on. So like I said, we'll take this and we'll look at it in conjunction with the need survey, the facilities assessment, all those other components of the master plan that Rachel discussed. And it will all together, come together for the recommendations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If we might want to discuss that for a minute. I think this is valuable information. I wouldn't disregard this.
No, no, I'm not. But I didn't want, if this was, if we're going to move forward with this, you know, here's a sports that people love in Morrisville, so we're going to build more horseback riding golf courses, then I would say we're on the wrong, I believe that's probably not the right track. I don't mind it if it's one of many data points to be used as a part of a comprehensive look at things.
Well, I think that's how they opposed it. But I just wanted, I actually appreciate this information. I think this is pretty darn valuable.
I just said, if this is what we're using, particularly the first slide.
I don't think they ever, even in the beginning of the presentation, they indicated it was a data point.
I have a question. Will you be using this for the rest of it?
Yeah, okay. Well, I think we're on the same wavelength then.
And if I could add some just general information about the community survey. This is actual information from people in this demographic area. It's sort of like what we contribute to our National Citizen Survey. The census comes through that, and we've talked about how they go back out to a segment of the population and sample and ask a whole bunch of questions. And that's how this community survey gets built. So I think it's a reference point for what people have fed into the system prior. And my, okay.
I have one question.
To give you a sense of the, I'm sorry, do you have another question?
Yeah. I didn't see cricket in any of the sports, honestly, because that's like a lot of people play, and we have invested like the Church Street Park and a lot of the things. And none of the survey or your ESRI.
So ESRI, I'm sorry.
Or any of the data or any of the things shows any of that as a sport there?
Right, so ESRI does not measure cricket. We looked into that, actually, for your community specifically. But ESRI does not measure cricket, and that's again why we need to think of this as one data point and have those other pieces of data as well that come in.
Probably going to do lacrosse.
Right. They do national trends on lacrosse and cricket both. They just don't do local trends.
Okay.
So some of the other data points that we will be looking at from a community input perspective and talking and interfacing with the community, we will have a total of three community input meetings. One of those, we've already hosted. We're going to also have one at the July 3 event, and then one towards the end of the master planning process. We're also having a number of meetings with staff. We just had an all-day workshop with all the members of Jerry's staff and a member, or I'm sorry, Courtney, the planning director, and trying to solicit input from a lot of different avenues from the community to folks within the town. We're also going to be doing a benchmarking and level of service exercise. So those are two more data sets that we're going to be using to make our recommendation. We're going to talk a lot about those tonight. But, so that's just kind of a, to give you a better sense of all the data points that we're going to be using to make our recommendations. Any other questions regarding?
Thank you.
So moving into our SWOT analysis, we wanted to look at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of facilities, operations, and staff and programs, and get feedback from you on this. Before we move into that, I just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of where we see the town. Keep in mind, this is a national benchmark. It is not the only benchmark that we're going to use by any means. We're going to be developing those specifically for the town and comparing the town to other similar agencies. But just to start the discussion and to provide a framework for the discussion, we are using the national standards. So a quick summary of the facilities. Nine active and managed parks totaling about 140 acres, 64 acres of open space, and other maintained areas being close to two acres. So how does that compare to the national standard? Well, we're about 85 acres deficient in parkland, and that's programmed maintained space. So it's not open green space. It's true park facilities. And then when you look at the number of parks, it appears at first glance that you're right on par, maybe deficient one park. I think it's important to keep in mind there, too, that parks like Ruritan and the Sari Wood and Jenkins, I wouldn't consider those necessarily programmed parks, and they're such a small acreage. They don't really truly serve a recreation purpose at this time. So that deficiency might be closer to three parks if we're just looking at it from a number of parks perspective. And then we look at some operation and staffing summaries. The operating budget is fairly close to the NRPA standard, slightly deficient. And I think one thing to note there is if you look at the per capita incomes for the town of Morrisville in either the North Carolina or the national standards, you're quite high on the income level. So we would almost expect to see here that the operating budget would be above the NRPA standard versus below. So I think that's something to think about as we move through the process. And in terms of cost recovery, this data is showing that you're doing quite excellent in that area with about 40% above the average. So another thing to keep in mind is that standard is based on feedback from other agencies. So it is not clear, nor does it specify, whether that includes maintenance budgets or not. It's probably a mix. And we know that the town of Morrisville's maintenance budget is under public works. So that could skew that information slightly, but I think you're still doing quite well in that area. And then the number of full-time equivalent staff. Again, the 7.3 standard does include maintenance staff. So while it says we're deficient about 2.5 staff, taking into account that we, the town does not have maintenance staff within the Parks and Rec Department, we could be about on par with staffing levels.
What is your, what is the per capita count for the NRPA standard?
So it's a mean. I'm not sure what the standard is. I would have to look up.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, there's a, would be a significant difference between what that standard was, you know, 10,000 residents versus 100,000 residents.
Is there any hope in the future to make these actually more useful numbers? So it's apples to apples?
Yes, so.
How did all of this would like, but we don't know if it matters?
Right, right. So when we get into the benchmarking, we are going to be looking at other comparable agencies. And when we talk about comparable agencies, we're looking at demographics. We're looking at population size. We could add in density in there as well. We're looking at per capita income. So we're trying to find other agencies that are most similar to you. And that could be within North Carolina. That could be nationally. So we can see what they're doing, and then we can compare how Morrisville ranks to what those agencies are doing. The other thing we're going to be doing is developing a level of service standard specifically for the town with input from staff, from council, and from the public. So we're going to say, you know, based on all the feedback we receive, based on the benchmarking, and based on some of these national standards, we feel for the town, given your unique qualities and characteristics, we think a good goal for you is, you know, maybe it's not 9.6 acres per 1,000 people because you're very limited by land and the ability to purchase land and develop land. So maybe it's more of a higher number of smaller parks, but less total acreage. So a lot of these things will factor into a development of standards and recommendations very specific to your unique community.
And will you be able to figure out the maintenance issue as well and the staffing issue? Because that would be really important to know.
Sure. So when you say issue, I think this would be a great transition, unless there's other questions, into the SWOT analysis, so we can hear more about what some of those issues and concerns are. So then yes, we will absolutely be able to develop some recommendations about that. Yes, sir.
When you say benchmarking, also are we looking at, maybe you mentioned this, benchmarking against towns of our size? When you say agencies, just other local governments in North Carolina?
Towns, yes, yes.
That's what you meant by agencies, okay.
Yes.
And the other item of note around benchmarking is our firm, Proz Consulting out of Indianapolis, has worked with over 800 master plan and business plan processes where we've done this type of business or benchmarking and level of service standard development. And so we have a, you know, we can do the benchmarking with the individual agencies now, but we also have a long history of what other agencies are doing and have done, and have kind of developed our own internal best practice standards based on that depth of experience that our firm brings. So that's another data point that we can pull in to make sure it's as appropriate as possible for the town of Morrisville.
All right, so we have a few catalyst questions that we can run through. But certainly, if there are other areas of input that you would like to give, this is the time to do it. We've got yellow stickies, and we're going to be kind of opening this up to discussion and taking notes. But if you find that going through the questions is the best format, we can certainly stick to these questions. I think the one thing to keep in mind is they're not necessarily framed to match strict weaknesses and opportunities and threats. So if you do have comments on some strengths of the department or the current facilities, weaknesses, opportunities, you should also make sure we're documenting those. So each one of these boards, there's a program board, facilities and maintenance, and operations and staffing. And I think our questions start with facilities. So are you all okay with us just going to have these questions? Or the person's like, okay? Does that sound good?
Sure.
The first, do you find existing parks are large enough and distributed frequently and efficiently throughout the community?
Yep. Help yourself.
No. I'll start. No, they're not distributed enough frequently. I would personally like to see everyone in town be able to walk to an existing park. And that's really not possible, and walk within a reasonable distance. I'm not sure that we can all do that.
What's the standard, like a mile?
Usually, depending on population density, it would be quarter mile to a mile.
Like it'd be less than a mile.
And the second. And another thing to keep in mind there is just because if the bird flies, you're a quarter mile to a mile, doesn't mean that you have a safe route to walk. So one thing you want to do is when the greenland, the tree produced right now comes back, we're going to try to align our recommendations with some of the routes so there are safe, connective routes to the parks that we're.
Any other thoughts on the first question?
To follow up on what Liz was saying, I think that, I think that particularly two of our newer parks in Morrisville are much closer to residential, tied to the green, at least one of them, Church Street Park, where it's closer to the greenways. So more people from that part of the community can come within one mile. And then Northwest Park, Breckenridge, where most, a lot, the majority of the big part of the population lives there. And then, but I think Liz is correct. They're not, it's harder for everyone in the town to access it because they're not centrally located. It's easier for certain people in certain parts of town to access it. So you live on that side of town, you can go to, it's a lot easier to go to Church Street Park than if you're on Morrisville Parkway or, excuse me.
That might be a strength now, that the northern part is better covered than it was just a few years ago.
And that could be.
Well, and also, we're doing a lot of planning now for more residential on the other side of 54. So those folks, it's going to be incredibly difficult for them to come to where our parks are, the majority of our parks are today. So, I mean, just thinking about where our residential development is and.
Even like Wilson, the new Wilson Road, Woods of the Fairbanks and those kinds of things. Those residential, there's no, yeah.
So I had a question, like, based on, like, that's a good point that you said, half a mile to quarter of a mile. But what's the population density is where the requirement of.
Where that changes?
Yeah.
I don't know exactly. I'll have to look that. But the pocket parks usually would be a quarter of a mile. And then neighborhood parks, community parks, regional parks, the access would go up from there. So pocket parks, quarter of a mile. And community parks would be somewhere between a half mile to a mile, depending on the population density. I don't know the exact numbers of where that is. It changes depending on the park.
The larger the park, the greater the service radius. So for walkability, you walk quarter mile to a mile. But in terms of the population you can serve, the larger the park, the more facilities, you're going to be able to serve a greater area. So it's almost two different states.
So it's almost two different standards that you're looking at. Service versus walkability.
Yeah. Do you have any kind of, like, might be later time that you can give it to Jerry to at least have that kind of a thing for future?
And I think you can see by the map of these parks where some of the gaps seem to be in terms of distribution. The challenge is going to be finding the parkland to develop and making sure that what we need is the residential versus a lot of the industrial. That's one thing we talked a lot about with staff today.
I think, I think the other piece to that, I know, I know it says existing parks, but we do have plans for a lot of other parks. Today, we have these plans, and some have been promised to the neighborhoods for twenty-plus years. So the only reason I say that, I don't want to lose sight of kind of what our existing obligations or promises to past residents have been.
Can we add those to this map?
Are they part of the undeveloped park and open space already? Or are they different properties?
Are you talking about Crabtree Creek Nature Park? Is that where you?
Because that's not developed, but they have a purple.
Yes, I don't know. Undeveloped parks and open space, I mean, that's somewhat true. And that one's kind of a hybrid because there's an existing recreation field there. There will be this Crabtree Hatchet Greenway going through it, and there, hopefully one day will be kind of a, similar to across the street, a shelter and restrooms and kind of a minimal park in that area. So, I mean, I guess you kind of talk, you know, that purple undeveloped park and open space kind of describes it.
So I guess turning that question around, is the purple and the blue both in the count for our park representation? Or are you only counting the blue and then we're underserved and then purple we could use or?
The latter. Yes. So the three categories that are kind of existing parkland that we have is active parks, maintained sites, which are the developed parcels. Then there's the undeveloped parks and open space, and then the kind of other maintained areas. The undeveloped parks, Jerry, I'm not wrong, but I think that's how we broke everything out on our spreadsheet, that the undeveloped parks have, now this year's happening for development.
But despite all that calculation, we're still underserved. It sounds like we still don't have enough potential.
You have sixty-four acres, so if you are deficient eighty-five, if you were to develop the sixty-four currently based on today's population, then you would only be deficient about twenty acres.
So what's the difference between developing a park and leaving it natural for a nature park? Because a lot of residents have commented to me that they would like the trees to stay. And when we develop a park, we typically make open space. And that's not always a goal for some of the residents.
So I think it's a combination of environmental space and undisturbed land is kind of what parkland is that I'm talking about.
So I'm talking about cutting all the trees down and putting a lawn. That's what we've seen for a lot of our developed parks. Now, that could be turned into tennis courts or a field for playing and stuff. But it's, I've heard people would like maybe, you know, part of our greenway system, an area where.
Passive.
A passive, right, passive recreation, as opposed to all this active, because.
Sure. So active is more ball, batting ball fields. And then there is passive recreation, which is still a developed park versus open space. So open space is really underserved, whereas a program park could be active or passive recreation. So if you wanted to do things like walking trails, a campsite, environmental education, that would still be a developed park and go towards your parkland acreage. It would just be a passive park versus active recreation.
That's really important, and I appreciate you taking the time to explain that because left natural is purple right now. And if we develop and not, you know, created a sporting field, we could still make that accessible, but more natural. Okay, good.
I had a, I had a question, like, this map is good, but what I'm kind of thinking is, for example, there's new development and the existing developments that are there. I'll take two examples, like, like, take Breckenridge or Kids Creek or Providence, they have their neighborhood parks. And so when we look at this whole picture and we are planning in your master plan, then you're trying to put any parks, there is already in a neighborhood, there's a park, a small pocket park, which is absolutely privately maintained by the HOAs. But there is open space for that to go. So as for other maintained areas or can you put like a different thing? Because it's an open space for the kids. It's a play area because automatically when we program into our planning and zoning, it's programmed into the payment and lieu and those kind of calculations, it does go into it. So why can't be it put as a place that it is an open space for the kids to play?
And part of our master plan is an inventory of some of the amenities that are offered by the HOAs. And just like our 2011 plan, there will be a chart in this one that will show those as separate but private recreation facilities. So you'll still have that information to take into consideration when you're looking at what amenities are offered in the community. We're primarily talking about comparisons with other public, you know, recreation facilities and things, but you'll have information about the private ones as well to consider.
Yeah, because the reason I say that is next to Preston Golf Course, it'll look all empty, but you won't have, you can't basically put a play park next to a Preston Golf Course.
Understand.
And that's a green, that it will look good as a green space. And that's a private, even though it's like a thing.
We'll eventually have another mound that maps all those, but we had within a one mile outside with a smoker there, about a hundred and fifty each way, communities. So it's been undertaking, but that's going to be on a separate map. So you will be able to see the distribution of all.
I have a couple of questions. Same thing following that is, like, some of the county, we have a lot of, like, you know, we could take advantage of those. I'm sure that's within two mile radius. Do you include those in your study? Just kind of same with other towns, if you have other parks that are nearby that we go to, same way that they come into us, but.
I think this map does show within a one mile.
Careful.
This is the one mile radius we started to map, like here, tennis parks, some of the elementary school parks.
Yeah, no problem, as long as you're.
We are identifying, yeah, we are identifying other public and private.
Because where I'm going is then, I mean, we've been, we could sit here and talk about pocket parks for Kids Creek, you know, I've been years in other stuff, greenways that neighborhoods don't have. But I would have, so I'm looking for your study to come back and kind of maybe divide the town into districts, let's say, or some means and say, this is what this district is lacking.
Okay.
You know, then it helps with the priority list, because I think that's, back to the mayor's statement, you know, some people are yes, but at the same time, I think the north, northern part of the town hasn't gotten it. He's, I don't know how you're going to get a pocket park in Kids Creek because the land is being taken up by development. You know, and there's opportunities, let's say, for the northwest part to expand. But again, that's part of our ETJ.
And this kind of feedback is exactly why we're here and asking these questions.
And then we're back to the demographics. Because is it worthwhile to, would a priority be to give a neighborhood of fourteen hundred homes greenways versus given, you know, adding a park for a hundred and fifty homes? I mean, things like that.
Right, right.
You know, the, you know, versus walking distance, but the same difference. I think it's, for us, it's a scale of priorities.
Yep, yep. And our action plan will also prioritize all of our recommendations.
So you'll give us criteria on how you're prioritizing it, right? Because that's what we're trying to stay out of the politics of it. Thank you.
So the second question really touches on diversity and range of recreational opportunities in the park, but similar to question one, I know we have limited time, so maybe buying a couple of these. And then the next is, do you find existing facilities able to support the demand for programs? So diversity in programs, you could kind of maybe talk about that.
So I'll just reiterate one of my points, saying that we don't have enough passive recreation opportunities. The other thing regarding existing facilities, I don't think we have adequate parking at all of our facilities either. We need to, like, we have plans for expanded parking at some of our areas, but that would allow for more programming and a lot more diversity. The other recreation opportunities, more senior programming is probably deficient at this time. We have limited space, so we have limited programs for that age group.
Back to your passive recreational book, would you also consider some of that passive recreation, some of those opportunities for environmental education programs at times?
We have a great example at Northwest Park of like passive, the stormwater management that we have, everything is nice, the asphalt is the newer kind that allows for the water to go through and stuff like that. So maybe more opportunities for education and environmental, you know, balance. So we have water around here.
We do.
I think our newer parks, you know, like, like our newest park, Church Street Park, I think gives the most of all of our parks for the widest range of activity. I've been going to that park more recently myself, just to either run with my son or play tennis or, as the cricket season, you could play cricket. And then people just go there, there's a lot of open space to walk and things like that. So I think it does meet a diverse range. I think that there's other needs, you know, in terms of soccer and baseball and, you know, I mean, I think the existing facilities that we have, including our recreational facility, the M A F C, I don't think has enough to meet the demand of, and the other parks, like for baseball, we've talked during the, over the last few years about baseball, not being enough baseball fields, not enough tennis courts, not enough, the soccer fields that we use on Cedar Fork District Park are always packed. We can't, there's not enough room to get more leagues and programs. So I think we just, this is a challenge that we have, and we're looking at how we meet that.
I think the most important thing is a challenge with Morrisville being strategically placed is the evening traffic. And at, after five thirty, how do you take your kid to the practice? And how quickly can you take to the facilities? So we had conversations with Jerry, and especially the basketball program. We outsource, you know, we go to Davis Dry and where, and have programs run there. So it's always the traffic. And the closest proximity that we can keep it within Morrisville, the programs, is best for our community. That's how I look at it for the future, because no one wants to commute. Everything either has to be quick ride, and then you drop off and you can come back, or let the game be a soccer, like, and we don't have to duplicate. If CTP has it, or like there's a soccer, and I don't, Green Hope has a lot of soccer fields, then they have that program. So what is that we had to do that we need it? And if our demand for basketball is a lot, then what do we need to do for those kind of things? Your demand for cricket is that, what is that we need to do? So kind of look at, we have all the data that, registration and those kind of datas we have. What do we need to do to focus on is everything, and time is critical because the short commute is the fastest to keep the registration up.
That's a, that's a great point, because, you know, in addition to when we're looking at level of service and benchmarking, looking at, that we're identifying other county parks and other parks within the area. From a physical space perspective, we're also looking at similar at ladders, right? So also providing programs and services that are in the area. What should we be doing that complements that? What pieces aren't being served by both or by multiple different players? So looking at that pieces, welcome the programs and services perspective.
So I think we're also lacking indoor basketball and volleyball facilities. Those are becoming quite popular, and we've been using Wake County School facilities for that. We don't have our own, and we only have the one outdoor basketball court, or two is M A F C. So.
So just going next to the next slide, we also wanted to get your thoughts on specialty facilities, as well as the pros and cons of serving residents versus non-residents? How do you feel about those pieces?
Well, I would definitely want to service residents as much as possible, and I think we've seen that non-residents still like to use our programs, and we usually offer premium price for those, and it doesn't seem to bother them. So I guess one of the cons is maybe we're not charging enough for the non-resident use of our facilities. I think one of the pros is that you do want to differentiate between who's paying the taxes and who's building this thing versus, but it goes both ways. I mean, we're, you know, we also go to Cary and use their facilities, and they charge us more than their own residents, so.
Fair is fair.
Yeah, fair is fair.
Or R T P. There's.
One con, maybe the mayor already mentioned it, was there are, we often get complaints of someone that, because the border's so close, so they live in Cary, but they're only one mile or less than a half a mile from Morrisville, but they can't get that rate. But we just, there's nothing really we could do about it because we tried it in the past and it just doesn't work. So I guess it's just something we have to deal with.
It seems like as fair as you can be, fairly typical policy to differentiate between the resident and non-resident and who's your taxpayer.
Yeah.
If you need something to fall back on with the next question.
I just add real quickly, I think we do offer a variety of programs, but, and everybody mentioned all the ones that are in need of more capacity. But I would just say, as we're looking at all this, to make sure that the capacity that we're trying to fill is for our residents and not for non-residents. I think. Yeah. I was going to say, I think it's very valuable to have the non-resident population here supporting our programs, and of course, we welcome that. And as, in the twenty years I've lived here, they've helped, the non-residents have helped us expand our programs. So I don't disregard or diminish that, but I'm just careful about what we're looking, the capacity that we're actually trying to fill.
It sounds like, and correct me if this doesn't sound like a true statement, but there is a gentle balance between the lowest capacity, so making sure residents are at primary attention, and understanding that non-residents can bring revenue, which might help build future facilities. So it's, I think it's going to be from a recommendation perspective, a gentle balance.
I would think it's not to build more facilities, that's just cost recovery, is what I would think, but I don't know, Jerry would probably know better about that. But yeah, when you look at all this, I mean, you, you really see the bigger picture, which is Cary, which provides a lot of this. They have a skate park, so we're not going to build a skate park. They already got an art center, which we were thinking about, but now they have it, so we probably won't. It's not the best use of our stuff. So if we could find a niche like we did with cricket, so we've met that, if there's something else that's not being done, Cary has an environmental education, I think Raleigh might have a ropes course, I don't know if anybody has splash pads.
There are a few in the area.
Okay. So, I mean, a lot of the opportunities to sort of differentiate are gone. So I think we just want to meet our basic needs for our residents, knowing that Cary will pick up the slack. One thing that. One thing that is a strength right now is that we do have resident registration first. So we're not going to turn away our residents in general. So that's very helpful. I think that's something that we should continue.
Splash, but the M A F C is getting.
I said, don't forget, we're going to have the first indoor.
M A F C is getting.
Splash pad or whatever we call it, so.
Splash pad, yeah.
Nobody else has an indoor one.
Right, or racquetball court.
Don't forget, or racquetball court, thank you.
As long as we keep those, hopefully we will. No, squash, that's a little too specialized. But yeah, just sort of keep Cary in mind when we're doing this because both communities use each other's facilities a lot and Cary doesn't have a lot developed to the west. So a lot of those residents will come here because we're closer. And one thing that we're really good is that we keep all of our programming pretty close. Cary was struggling with sending people way across town to meet their needs. Now they have, they've split it in half to sort of address that, but we, we shouldn't ever have to, especially if we can get our things within our borders. And that's hopefully as part of our town core. Because you're looking at that too, the possible community center, is that in your?
If, if that turns out to be a need that is revealed through the process, then it would be.
Okay.
We've got about eight minutes and I want to make sure we have an opportunity to touch on the benchmarking and level of service. I think that's going to be. Are there any other last comments about current facilities, operations, programming, things that we should be mindful of as we work through projects?
Rachel, I'd just ask if council members have anything that they remember or think of or want to add, how do you want them to do that?
They can either contact me directly or phone questions or comments through Jerry and he will see that I receive them and at the end of the presentation, both my contact information and Margaret, if you have anything that's more data operations, benchmarking.
Thank you for your time, Martha. Can we get a copy of this presentation too? Okay, good, thank you.
Send the PDF to Cary and then.
Yeah, and my apologies for that. I was trying to connect to the system and print it before the meeting. Unfortunately, my computer still won't connect to the wireless system, I believe is still down here. So I, my apologies for that, I just couldn't get it to print.
As long as we get it, that's fine.
We, we will definitely get a copy too.
Oh, my quick comment, are we, are we soliciting now?
Sorry?
Do you want comments now?
More?
Oh, and you're doing a good job. We've done a good job. I would just, I know, for instance, there's a newsletter to put out by the Parks and Rec that I get and they talk about what other towns are doing. So I would just, I would always like to, the town, since we're going in and putting in a lot of new stuff, let's try and be as innovative as we can. I mean, you know, seniors are picking up, so I know there are some senior parks or things for seniors to do in a park. You know, other things where people are doing recently, you know, whatever, anything that you guys can think of because you're on the, the cutting edge, I guess.
And one of the, one of the pieces that we're not going to have time to really get into today, but that we're working on with staff is a program assessment. And part of that is a life cycle of programs that looks at programs in different stages. And what that does is helps you make sure that you are being innovative with programs, you're bringing in a pipeline of programs so that you, you don't end up with a stable of saturated programs.
Thank you.
So any other comments before we move into benchmarking and level of service standards?
Okay. So as we discussed earlier, another data point that we're looking at throughout the master plan process is benchmarking different communities. And so when you're looking at deciding what communities to benchmark, there are several different metrics that you want to think about. Demographics is one of them, geography is another, budget, and those are really thinking about communities that are similar to you. You also want to have one or two communities in there that are kind of aspirational. So speaking about like the, the different, the magazine that talks about what different towns are doing in Parks and Recreation, what are some of those pieces that you really like about other towns that you want to pull in and try to accomplish in Morrisville? You also want to look at communities where you have a relationship because you're sending these places a questionnaire that you want them to fill out. And the timing right now, of course, we're getting into the busy summer programming season. So that's important to make sure that we actually get feedback back from those communities. We met with staff today and we came up with, we had a great brainstorming session around the benchmarked communities. These are our first cut, first draft of what those communities might be. So just want to put those in front of you, get your feedback, communities you think are great to be on the list, if there's anything missing. And again, you can think about this as well and get back to us with ideas around the benchmark communities.
Initial thoughts on the one that we have, the few that we have up there, some are in North Carolina, most are in North Carolina, and then we have two potentials in Texas and one in Indiana. So we wanted to give both a local and a national perspective. We might not necessarily find the perfect benchmarking agency within North Carolina, so reaching outside, I think could be, provide worthwhile information.
So with the communities, Apex is going to be significantly larger. Holly Springs has a similar challenge with the downtown, which is interesting. But are there any communities on the east side of Wake County that we could consider? Are they significantly smaller than Morrisville? I mean, Wendell seems to be going through explosive growth, yes. It is smaller than Morrisville, but it is having infrastructure challenges, it is looking at land use, it is looking at a lot of different things that are emerging. So could we consider one of the eastern side towns? Rollsville is another example of experiencing potential explosive growth because, you know, it doesn't always have to be a bigger community, but maybe a, a community that's struggling with this rapid rate of growth might be helpful for us to see. They've been doing a little better, maybe in their park management and, and planning? And what did they do?
Okay.
And we talked a little bit about some of those smaller communities earlier and, you know, unfortunately, tho, those communities are going through very similar things that, that we went through in Morrisville, are still going through in Morrisville, but they're also going through them at a stage, excuse me, that, you know, that we went through 10 years ago. Their growth, where they are right now, their population numbers, you know, they're actually a little behind the curve of where we are on that curve. We'd be glad to look at them, but that was one of the reasons why we looked at some of the, you know, some of the towns that were a little ahead of us in that curve, because we're looking at where we're going and trying to look forward at where, you know, we think we may need to be when we're, you know, 10 years from now, the size of a Holly Springs. You know, we may never get to the size of Apex, but we were looking for communities that were more demographically similar to what Morrisville is.
And I'm not saying we should look back. I'm just saying that maybe they did a better job of planning so that they can grow more organically or something, just to get more ideas. They have similar Wake County tax bases, you know, they have similar school systems. There is some similarities there.
Yeah.
I think one thing that might help is if we understood how these were deemed to be comparable and what factors did you perhaps relate these to be comparable for Morrisville?
And they may, each community might be comparable in a different way, meaning I don't think we're going to find another agency that has the same demographic makeup, per capita income, growth restrictions and land restrictions as Morrisville necessarily. They might exist out there, it's been undermined. So we might have, and you can add more on this as well, but some of those communities might be a great example of demographics or community size. Some other communities might be a comparable agency with regards to per capita income or education and then we're going to have to kind of extrapolate the data from there.
Yeah, so just to give you a specific, a specific example, Plainfield, Indiana, populations, somewhere around 50,000 to 60,000 people, I believe. It's also a suburb, it's a suburb of Indianapolis, it's near an airport. It has, I know on the, the northeast side of the town of Morrisville, you have a large commercial area and it's somewhat separated from the residential. Plainfield is laid out in a very similar way. The education level isn't as high as a town of Plain, as the town of Morrisville and the median income is a little bit lower, but it's still more affluent than the rest of the United States. And it also has an aquatic and fitness center, very similar to the town of Morrisville. So those are the kinds of things that we would be looking at with each of these. Sugar Land, Texas, we're looking at that one. Again, that has a slightly higher population count, but also has a very high Asian population, similar to ours. So with each of these, they're each going to have one piece of that demographic story that will relate to what we're doing in Morrisville. And so that's why you do want to get, you want to get a couple of communities that are similar to yours, but you also want to see the differences that, you know, it would be hard to get all in one picture.
So we're going to be doing five to seven communities as benchmark comparisons?
Usually we send out about seven letters to different agencies and not all of them respond typically. So that's why our goal is to get five.
Okay. And so once again, I'll just say that it's going to be important to make sure that our benchmarks are apples to apples, like since we do our maintenance with Public Works, that's going to be a big part of our decision making towards the end. So we need someone who does that or that we can break it out in such a way that we can actually compare the per capita staff and the per capita spend. Because if we can't do that, it's not going to be nearly as useful.
Right. And I can tell you from experience, it's going to be harder to find agencies that are set up that way. And, and really, a lot of agencies have different structures. There are, there's always a nuance with the way that agencies are set up. But what we can do is we can ask them to break out on the questions that we give them. What are your maintenance staff costs versus what are the rest of your costs? And that way we can subtract it and try to get to that apples to apples comparison.
Maybe our staff can try to incorporate it our way.
That is, that is something we can do. We can work with Public Works and fold those numbers in with ours, if that helps you to have a better picture for comparison purposes.
Yes, please.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Right, any other?
Just a quick comment. I thank you for the explanation because I, I didn't, I don't know anything about the Texas or Indiana examples. So all I was going to say, and you kind of answered it, is to make sure that the example, and I am familiar with the North Carolina ones, and I like the Matthews, Davidson, Cornelius. I think that's a, a very comparable to Morrisville, you know, growing area outside of Charlotte and kind of fits us to, you know, growing outside of Raleigh and anyhow. I would just say that the, the examples need to be growing communities and towns outside of a ma, another major city. So, and you kind of explained that pretty well with the Indiana one, so that would be my only hope that. And yeah, I don't expect them to be apples to apples. I don't, I think that's really hard, but as close as you can get. Thank you.
I think it's also helpful as we find commonalities to take a look at what those local, those other municipalities are doing. So, and how they're balancing open space and what the council members, Gopin, Johnson talked about, the, the net, the passive parks versus the more, you know, active kind of traditional parks. Like recently, I was in Holly Springs and I was interested to see them acquire a farm. It's like 14 acres and they got a real steal of a deal and it's called the SUG Farm, but it's close to the park, Wamba Park. So it's an example of how people could go to a traditional park in the fields and run and do that kind of stuff, but then they have access to trails and things like that. So, you know, you know, that, that just was interesting to me. So, you know, I think as we benchmark, and then I think it's also important, my final comment is as we're benchmarking, I also would be interested in, I guess, we come up with our own master plan of how we're generating our own metrics with our own usage of our facilities and things like that from, you know, the different sports and activities because I think it's going to help us gauge, you know, where we go as a town with new, new facilities, right? And we, some of that data we probably already have, some of it we probably have to make our own assumptions because we just don't, I don't know if we have any metrics of how many people visit, like Tred Street Park a day or do we have, do, do we monitor that or is it, can we make assumptions or?
We have traffic counters that we put at different parks throughout the year so that we get sample numbers for that. And, and Public Works handles those and so we can pull those numbers.
Thank you.
Where are you going to get the data, what our final population's going to be? And how will that influence your recommendations?
Well, as I mentioned, I'm going to be working with Courtney from the planning department to make sure that we have the correct information from the special census. And then we'll look at that in conjunction with what the demographics were that were projected through our ESRI data and together we'll make a decision on what numbers to use.
Because that's just for now. We're trying to get to.
The projections, right.
Make sure we have enough parks for then. So that's an important.
I think what I talked about is if we're going to do comparison data, we have to use the same data. We can, otherwise we don't compare that. We're going to do population projections, I think that's where we're going to get down a little early. But my great caveat is I have no access to any historical data, but it's one of the servers that we have access to. So we are going to try our best to kind of get them some of the basics that they have because I have basically, I believe, so I just kind of, a lot of our military data is not available.
Should we postpone this process a little bit in order to have a better output?
No, if I postpone the process, I might really access. What we'll do is, again, comparison, we've got to use lots of census data to make true comparisons. However, when we found our work rates, I probably have enough information to supplement, but I'm just cautioning that I may not. And we may be having to use what data is available.
But there are many other parts of the project that, that will be moving forward, you know, our surveys and other things until, and so that information will be incorporated as part of the final report. We have several other stages that we will be working on in the meantime.
I just don't want to end up with recommendations that are 10,000 short of our final population.
Completely understand.
I guess if I could just add real quick, I know you covered it in one of the earlier slides about the.
Yes, too low.
Projected mix of, you know, whether it's Asian versus, you know, whites or other ethnic groups. And while I think there's some debate about the actual numbers, I think the percentages are probably pretty representative of what is going to happen or what has happened in Morrisville. So I, while I'm interested to see what the Texas community is like with the high Asian population, with, with demographics, whether it's age or ethnicity or culture, comes sports. So I want to make sure that we capture that throughout this process. If we're just comparing ourselves to Holly Springs, which is totally different demographics than we do, I think we, we'd probably short ourselves what, what our reality is. So I, I think benchmarks are fine, but I think in our case, we're so unique with our demographics that, that should be a constant thought in the back of your head.
And it's interesting that.
Just, that's what I was, we're going to ensure that access, 35.2% of representation.
And some of those locations that we're talking about in our earlier conversations came from the fact that these are also regions and areas that when we've held youth cricket tournaments here, these are regions and areas where teams from outside of North Carolina came from to play in those tournaments. So, you know, we'll be working with them to verify those, you know, exact towns where those came from, but they're in those same regions, so we know they're experiencing some of that same growth.
Can you add like the Asian population, I'm looking at, the mix of different.
You're going to turn your microphone on.
Yeah, even though it says like 35.5% Sugar Land, Texas, who, it's, I've been familiar with that. Richardson, Texas, that's the suburb of Dallas, that's also a pretty good neighborhood. Or any of the New Jersey or Chicago neighborhoods is, is a good example. Or any of the California, San Jose, Sacramento areas.
Thank you. I wanted to end briefly on the level of service piece. So we talked a lot today about the benchmarking piece and the level of service for different facilities and programs. This is an example worksheet, this is the draft worksheet that we'll be starting from to do the analysis of the level of service. So as Rachel mentioned. So as Rachel mentioned, we'll look at the recommended service levels. Will be based on the benchmark communities, the national standards, the, you know, backlog of data that our firm brings. And some of the community needs assessment results to develop what those recommended service levels are. And we're also going to be working with Jerry to determine what should those categories be on the left-hand side. So we talked a little bit about active versus passive recreation, open space versus developed parkland. So we will be working to get the correct terminology for the types and categories of parks and facilities that you have in the town of Morrisville. So that's the next step with the level of service. And with that, I think it concludes our time and our presentation. Please do feel free to reach out to either Rachel or myself directly if you have any other input. I'm happy to have a phone conversation as well if you have more that you'd like to share with us, too.
And thank you all for coming to Morrisville and helping us, helping us out with this. Any questions before we just take a quick break?
Pretty informative. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
It's, why don't we go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and we'll meet back here at, we'll say, 7:55.
Sounds good.
12-minute break.
Okay, the time is 7:54. We're going to go ahead and get back to work here. We're now on to merit pay updates. I'll turn it over to Jeanne Markle for that discussion.
We'll share. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. The first topic we'd like to just update you on is merit pay. A whole bunch of pieces to this conversation that we're going to share with. Really, the first is just sort of a roll forward of the history of how we've done merit pay. And really, 2010 was the year that we were all still in that recessionary period, and that was a year that there was no pay adjustment for employees. It was just sort of a natural starting point to show the evolution of what happened. As things happened, the next year, we came back, and employees received a lump sum. So I got a check, but it was not added to their base salary. During that year and beginning for fiscal year 12, there was a plan formulated. I will candidly admit, it was probably one of the most complicated, difficult-to-understand plans. I still don't understand it. I'm being honest, and Jeanne and I have had that conversation. I believe what the theory behind it was, was to try to recoup and bring salaries up to market, but it involved a number of combination of factors, including pay adjustments somewhere between 1.1% up to 6.2% that then had, that took into account a merit rating, but also where you were in a pay grade range. And so employees got a partial adjustment to a base salary and some lump sum. And it was part of what's called a merit pool. And we've talked about that a little bit before. It's a finite amount of money that you use to support pay raises, and so that was calculated and shown in the budget document. That pay system was in place up until the fiscal year 17 year. During the 15, during our budget discussions in 2016 for fiscal year 17, I presented and council approved some modifications to that plan. And it simply put, it reduced the amount of merit, but it all went to a base salary. So it allowed us to keep up in the market. It was still really a merit pool, but when we talked about the amount, the average amount of merit pay that employees got under the old plan, it was at 3.5, 3.4% the combination. But about, let's just say roughly 2.5% actually went to base salary. The current proposed plan mimics that in that it all still goes to the salary, and it's just a little bit higher than what it was under this other plan. We also converted from a calendar year performance evaluation to a fiscal year performance evaluation system. One of the challenges with the old plan was, there was a gap of six months from when you got your rating to when there was a pay adjustment. And it's not a pay adjustment issue as much as things could have changed dramatically in that six-month period of time, and it was just sort of unrecognized for another 18 months, really. So that was one of the things that, at least I was advocating, really reflected better that employees' performance based on a fiscal year, when we have projects and goals and accomplishments that we're able to measure on a fiscal year basis, it would line better. Council supported that, and last year was the first year we did that. And just showing you on this page, that at fiscal year 16, which was the last year that that lump and base pay was, the average award by percentage was 3.51, and 2.49% went to the base salary. And just roughly, I'll tell you, I think this year, the total pool of money, which also includes all the taxes and benefits allocation percentages, was about $410,000. I've already described this plan, but have some more details. The lump sums were taken out of the mix. The percentages were established. If you don't get a, at least meets expectations rating, you do not get a pay raise. For a meets expectations, which would be, you're a good employee, you would get a 2%, and it progresses up the range there. Last year, as we processed this, the average merit was 2.66% across the board for the employees that got a raise. Not everybody gets one. Some people aren't eligible. If you're only here a portion of the year, you get a prorated merit. And I provided an average salary. And leave somewhere. Okay, next page. Just for comparison purposes, again, the two years, the one before and the one after we made the change, we had 151 people receive some kind of merit pay in fiscal year 16, 136 in fiscal year 17. And we, one of the things we talked about the last time is, not everybody gets the highest range. And this distribution shows how many of our employees got these various ratings. And I will also tell you, going back behind these, this is a pretty regular distribution. It sort of follows a pattern, give or take a couple percentage points. And for those two years, we've also shown you just an average salary to compare. So you see that what's adjusting is somewhere around that 2%. It goes up, it goes down, and that's because, as tenured employees leave, we hire at lower rates. So it fluctuates. It doesn't constantly go up. It balances as employees leave and come into the town to work. As we move into the proposal for this year, it's modified a little bit from our original budget workshop. We just really wanted to make sure that we were as closely as possible estimating, and used that pool concept. And how does that work? Is, we don't know what people's performance ratings are at this point in time. So based on that distribution in our history, 3% of just what our salaries and wages are is how you form the merit pool. And then there is some amount for taxes, and there are some of those market adjustments that we know that just occur through. So the original number we talked about was about 450 when we initially talked that it might be there. It's closer to 430, and our average salary, again, is really about the same as it's been for the past several years. The merits would be based on the performance evaluations for this fiscal year. They are being done as we speak. We are in the middle of that process, and we expect that average to be comparable to prior years as well. I can answer any questions about that, or talk about the market adjustments we've talked about before, and then take questions. Is there any preference?
Two more slides.
Okay. One of the things I've also mentioned to council is, is we are, we are experiencing some turnover. There are a variety of reasons why people leave employment. Sometimes it's salary. It's not always salary, but it does occur. It also is more with us demonstrating itself in some of our hiring positions. We've got some more information in the Q and A that we'll talk about in a little bit. But one of the things that we do is, we've got some access to some peer data, and we've talked a little bit about comparisons. And that's one of the values of our membership with the league, is they do that on behalf of municipalities, and they issue that data. And so we're able to go into a database and do some peer comparisons. And they also categorize data in various ways. One of them is based on population of a town. We benchmark our position, so we're really trying to make sure that our position is comparable to those others. And so there's some process of making sure that we match up jobs for comparable salaries. They look at two data points. One is an entry-level pay range, and the other is the actual average. What we don't always know is how long people have been there, and that sometimes influences that actual average. But it's the best data that we have to compare. A lot of the local Wake County municipalities are in that data. Not everybody, but a lot of them are. And then we are able to, across the state of North Carolina, this is only North Carolina data, we're able to look at peer cities that function like us, have the same kinds of positions. So we look at that. We also talk to our neighbors, and then they categorize that into populations of cities. And what's happened with us is, we've gone up into that 25,000 to 99,000, and that's where we're falling off, is it doesn't follow form always, but smaller cities pay less. When you get into that mid-range, you're recruiting for the same people at different levels. So that's just how they categorize it. And what we also have to do is look at, make sure that within our own organization, the level of responsibility, the level of work are being compared to. And that's where knowing what people do in those other cities makes a difference. So I would tell you, we always wait from the area that we're recruiting in, that we know the positions are the same. So I'll just give you maybe a simple example. Let's say, well, Jerry was here tonight. I'll just use Jerry. If his job as Parks and Recreation Director was to supervise two staff and one park, it would not be comparable to a town that has 20 parks and 200 staff. So that's some of the checking that we do, just to make sure that we're about at the same place. So then, just the last page, these are just some examples of areas that, on first pass of that data that we're looking at, again, this is not just to give somebody a raise because we want to give them. This is proven demonstrable places where we might be at a disadvantage. And it's always easy to try to keep somebody by offering them money after you left. It's better to reward them while they're here. And that's sort of the theory behind market rate of pay. So just without getting into specific people and specific positions, some of the areas that I've found that warrant further attention are some of our department heads, some of our administrative positions, our mid-level public works supervisors, developmental, development services mid-level managers, police. We've got some compression issues. That's a much more complicated and difficult analysis, which is not complete, but we know we have that issue. Fire prevention, you've heard us talk about, some of our recruiting issues. One of them is our fire marshal. And inspections is the other one. Extended delays in trying to fill those positions. And then candidly, the mayor and council salaries are out of whack as well. And I can't even tell you that I could find the last time that they were adjusted. Now, they don't typically get pulled into this. I tell you, we may want to rethink that. You work awful hard, too. So, and that data is pulled by the league, so it does matter. So that's what, some of that allocation is just for some of those market adjustments. It is not going to fix everything. It wouldn't be something that is done in a vacuum. I'm just trying to prepare to meet those needs for the organization. And I'm happy to answer any questions, follow-up.
I think you did a good job explaining it. Any questions on merit pay before we move on?
I think this is a very good breakout. It answered all the questions we had in that work session.
Thank you.
Just a comment. I mean, I support merit pay for, I think the main reason is just to reward the hardworking staff that's going above and beyond the call of duty for, you know, all of the great successes we're having. And I think it's always a fine balance between, you know, are people leaving? I mean, turnover is always discouraging, and we don't really know, are they leaving for the money? Are they leaving for a better opportunity? But what I'm hearing from you as our town manager is that having this keeps us competitive with hiring, you know, at that level as we move up in the tier. And of course, addressing possible turnover, although sometimes they may be leaving not for salary.
But that is correct.
Yeah.
And just, you know, as your town manager, and we've talked about this before, I appreciate the flexibility you always give me. My duty back to you is the transparency and the openness of the things that we do, and that's what I'm trying to do here. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Martha, I just have a quick question, well, comment and a question. This is then the same, the merit plan is the same as what we did last year.
That's correct.
FY '17. Okay.
This would actually be the second year in this plan.
New plan. Okay. And then the only difference being the market pay adjustment? We did not do that last year.
We have not addressed market pay adjustments.
Okay.
What we've indicated, and it's in the budget message, that we do look at our job classifications, a third of those, a third of those about every year. So in a three-year cycle, we go out and look at that information in a much more detailed fashion than what I'm doing here. We're talking about review of job descriptions and interviews, and we do that really to check the pay range, and if, make sure that doesn't need adjusted, or the position itself hasn't somehow been reduced or added to that changes its classification and ultimately its compensation. But what we don't do is, when we adjust or make those adjustments to our pay ranges, unless you fall out, you don't automatically get that 2%. So you fall back in the pay range is what really happens, when we adjust those pay ranges to what the market is hiring.
Okay. Is it so, and then, well, actually, another question. So then, is that something we should expect to see in future years as well? There's potential that we'll see this again next year?
I would like to get ahead of it. I will be candid and tell you, I think we knew before Chief Andrews came in that we had some issues in police. But we also agreed to allow her to come in and assess the operation and look at and make recommendations. And we're just now getting to doing that. So that is one. The other information that I'm at least aware of concern with is, we're really good at the hiring level for fire, but they're falling down and out as they stay. And Todd mentioned, when we talked about the Quint, we are very vulnerable at that fire engineer, at that five or six, because they can go somewhere else and make a lot more money. And so those are two things we already have on our work plan to continue to develop. And with the number of employees we have in public safety, that would be something I'd want you to see numbers for, before, I'm just asking you for a pot of- I'd want you to see numbers for before, I'm just asking you for a pot of money. And so that's what our plan is.
Okay. Thank you.
This is something like the merit increase is something we have been doing and absolutely support the increase, but I'm thinking in a different way. Do we do in a, on an annual basis, an employment satisfaction survey and see, because every time it's not increased in merit, increased because the health cost is increasing and this one, end of the day, it's a washout. You know, that's what, and I look myself as an employee, it's a different thing. So, and what is that like in a broader way, the employment satisfaction survey looks like or on an exit interviews? What does that look like? You know, so those things, I don't know if, I've been just a year, but have that been shared with the council, what it, it is? Because as my employer takes the employment survey very seriously, because every employer has to fill it and they make sure, the job satisfaction is very important. We, money cannot buy everything. It has, they had to work from their heart and they have to see like they are invested and they're thing and that's important.
Yes, sir. We did do an employee satisfaction survey this year. We have that, if you'd like to see that. It was a primary driver in some of our healthcare conversations related to that dependent healthcare cost, but it, it does cover a variety of things. We're happy to show that to you. I'm not sure we've done it every year. I think we've done it every other year. So we do have that and are happy to share that with you if you're interested in that information. With exit interviews, a little bit different in that when Lori conducts exit interviews, she does sort of ensure employees, you know, some discretion in whatever comments they want to make. You want to make sure that information is given and receiving as it should be and, and she addresses areas of concern that she has either individually or globally for the organization. She, she is responsible for bringing those forward if those things come up.
I'm like, I'm looking at a global, not as individual, because end of the day, we are doing the, everything as a merit increase or, you know, whatever we call as, I can't get the name of that, the salary adjustment and all those things, but when we are losing people at the same time and doing everything, what is that we need to do to look into is also very critical to keep our employees.
I agree with you. It is not all about the money. That is correct.
All right, on to lap salary.
I had some questions, sorry. I was just wondering, page on 100, long-range forecast, the merit pay average is going to be 2%?
We just have to use some kind of factor in order to do some forecasting. It, it is, it still comes through the budget process, but there's growth factors in the long-range model.
Right, I understand. Okay. But it's lower than, it's lower because again, I've, I'll said it before, but I'll say it again. I mean, that's a penny on our tax every year and I, I think it's a great tool from merit pay, but at the same time, I think the, the council has two, two options with it. They can set the amount of, in the pool, which I think has been, has done before councils. And then the other thing is the, how to implement it with the performance rating, how it, how it coincides. That's all. I just, because I don't know if that's sustainable. I've, I'll ask the question for next year, but the idea is if we're putting a tax increase a penny on our property tax every year, can you do that? I just, and I brought it up before and you indicated you had data to show that every year towns always do this and I'm just saying, well, I don't, I'm not disputing that, I'm just saying, but the two factors which I think we can control are how big is the pool and then who receives it inside the pool? Everybody's eligible, but if somebody's just meeting expectations, that's good. Do they get a merit pay increase for that? That's all.
Yeah, and we, we do have a comparison chart to show you in the Q and A with that information, so if we could come back to that. I, I respect what you're saying. I think it does illustrate why we went back and made sure that we brought you as accurate numbers as possible, but I would offer, if we don't have employees, the town is not sustainable, is, is my concern.
Right. But okay, the average salary, I'd like to see some data showing other towns their average salary.
That, that is not collected by anybody that I'm aware of. That's something we've calculated internally for our employee population.
That sounds something that you go back, just like benchmarking other things.
It, it's not something that people disclose. It's not a benchmark that is used for comparative purposes across municipalities.
Okay. I know, because early in one of the briefings we had earlier about Parks and Rec, the average salary, you know, they used median incomes, how high things are, and they compared it to the state and that's all. I mean, again, I think there is other factors. I'm not saying do away with merit pay. At some point though, I think that it might have to shrink a little or you might have to use the other variable of who receives, who receives it, somebody meeting expectations. Isn't that what there's, I mean, just from a perspective of our tax base, that's how it works out there for them.
And, and the tax base grows and, and that's how we're able to sustain it as well. If that were not to be the case, we'd probably be having a different conversation.
Yeah, we're absorbing it. We're not enhancing other services. We're putting that into our discretionary income, which becomes less.
We, and I, I'll just add, the pool of money, it, it is a pool of money. It's, it's based on a percentage versus a fixed dollar amount, but it has stayed relatively the same even with all of the employees we've added. So I, I think that's also a factor that should be considered.
I'd just say, use that for the long-range plan versus going, saying you're going to lower it to 2% when, 3% when it's closer to three or four.
The reason why 2% is used in the out-years is to not overinflate the years, because you do have an attrition factor that, that comes into play. And then you have the, the factor annually of dealing with who's eligible. And you've already seen the numbers are different from one year to the next in one of the slides. And that's why it's allowing for that 1%. That's something we can test other percentages if necessary, but that, that's the explanation for why we've used that 2% in the out-years.
Lap salary, we talked about this at a previous meeting and this, this was, this is now just the accumulated list of all of the, all of the uses of lap salary. So this would be inclusive of things that went for operational type of expenditures as well as things that I had previously described as like personnel. So you, you see both uniforms and, and staffing recruitments and a fire truck repair, but this, this is the total amounts of lap salary that were used for non-salaries to date. 139,000.
Can I just ask you about, on the subject, page 37, section 15, paragraph C, where it talks about up to 100,000 threshold may be reallocated for the first six months.
Which, which is why I sort of broke out a first half of the year and a second half of the year.
So my question, then it says.
Sorry. Sorry. That was off my back.
Then it says, up to 100,000 threshold may be reallocated in the first six months of fiscal year with another 100,000 added to the threshold. Are we saying the, is it a 100,000 use it or lose it first half? Or if you didn't use it, you, you can spend up to 200,000 for the entire year?
It, it wasn't accumulated, it was two 100,000s. And, and all I'd offer an explanation is I wouldn't want to take it out in the first year, first half, just to say we did it if it really wasn't necessary.
Okay. So I just want to make, so you're, you're seeing this as a total of 200,000 and we're limiting the first 100,000 to the first six months. In other words, you couldn't spend, could you spend 175 the first six months?
Not without coming to you first.
But you can, in this scenario, you could have spent up, are you saying you could have spent up to 168,000 for the second half?
It was an additional 100,000 came into play for the second half is how at least Jeannie and I have interpreted that.
That how everyone is, and I'm not, I'm not really questioning it, I'm just trying to get clarification, that it's not a, a limit for 100,000 first half, second half type of thing?
And I, I, I will offer that there, there are, this one came into play when we took the contingency out of the budget last year. And I, I think there are ways that we can enhance it. I, the, the reporting in 50,000 increments and you see, we didn't report because we got in February, I should have reported to you and, and just, and, and just being honest, we were already full-on in appropriation of the budget and sort of just missed it. But we can make this a more formal mechanism. The purpose was to recognize we didn't really need to come back and make a budget appropriation because money already existed in the budget. And to stay, most of these decisions were need to make urgent decisions. These weren't, we'll go to council and brief it and vote it on a month. We had to move, and I hope you see in the types of ones we did, there was some urgency here.
The other, the other thing I want to remind you, giving the manager the flexibility to use available resources within the budget doesn't cause you to come back to council with the BOA and inflate the budget, because you have to balance the budget. And sometimes that's just not necessary when we have maybe the ability to manage and work within potential available resources. The reason for the 100,000 for the six months is really to be proactive in managing cost and managing those transfers in that first six months, which is really what you don't want to see is a whole bunch of transfers. That means, you know, brings into question and doubt really the purpose and the measures used to develop the budget. So that's why there's that six-months measure. The strategy or the methodology behind really giving the second six months is because that's usually when you start feeling some push, where you start having more expenditures, you're having things that are unforeseen or starting, that you're thinking you were trying to absorb with your budget are probably coming out where maybe you need some additional support. So in the first six months, we try to work within the numbers. That's sort of the strategy and explanation behind it.
And I, I would just add, probably as a protection for you as well as for me and as we put this list together, the one that gave us pause was the $55,000 for the police in-car cameras. So I would suggest an enhancement would be nothing over $50,000 without a reporting in advance. That would be the improvement I think we could make to this.
And you're thinking, as far as the reporting, that first half, is that something you, you can get to us by the end of January?
So I, I think what you're, we didn't report because we hadn't even reached that $50,000 increment. So a report at the end of six months also enhances the accountability for this process.
The thing, I, I see this like as a lap salary usage, but it doesn't say how much lap salary accrued.
We haven't gotten there yet.
That's there in the?
It's in there.
Okay. Can I just make a real quick comment here? Because just to refresh or remind everybody, if we, I have no problem with this process and the way it's set up, by the way. If we didn't do this, each one of these would come to us at a council meeting. And I've been down that road before, where we, and so we, it just tacks on more time to our meetings and, you know, which is fine when we have short meetings, but we don't have short meetings. And if, if through this reporting, we were concerned about anything, we could certainly stop this whole process. I've not seen anything that I'm ever concerned about in this process. I think the money is spent wisely and it's spent quickly when it needs to be versus coming through council process. So I, I have no problem with the way we've established this. I do like the idea of maybe reporting at six months, let us know where we're at. I think that, that would be fine to have that.
Some historical perspective on your contingency that you used to have as council, it's been an upwards of 150,000 or more. And that was a lump sum you gave the manager in the past and there wasn't a reporting requirement with it. So I think the way that it's written provides that same level of responsibility in reporting, even though it's after the fact, as maybe does the Budget Ordinance Amendment if it were to come to you. But it allows for the mobility to do the work and, and these things are things that were necessary and probably on target. There's some differences in unforeseen events.
Actually, can I add one more thing too? Not only would this take time at our council meetings, but it takes staff time to create a briefing sheet, to put all the data together, to come here and present it. I'd rather than now doing the job and getting things done personally.
So there's, there's no longer a contingency in the admin?
No. We, this replaced that strategy to be responsible and, and give you that information and transparent.
All right. Any other lap salary questions?
No, sir.
All right. Next.
I'm going to turn it over to Jeannie. We've collected questions that council asked back at the retreat. There were just a couple. Then our budget preview and then at last week's meeting and compiled that information.
Okay. So everybody.
What I asked, that will come later.
So everybody received a copy of your questions. So I'm not going to go verbatim over every single one of them. I'm just going to touch on a few highlighted ones. If there's something you want to ask about and discuss tonight, just speak up and let me know. So on page seven is, is the debt capacity information. The question was really, in that fully loaded year in 2020, what's the capacity between the 11% that we're estimating and really your policy? I would tell you, it's estimating around $1 million in debt service payment for that, starting in that annual year. So what does that look like in a project? It's about a four, estimates out at about a $14 million project that has a term of 20 years and it used a 4% interest rate. Again, that's sort of what the model, the, the long-range forecasting tries to use, 4%. So that just gives you some perspective. I would caution when you, when you're looking at that maximum capacity for 15%, the estimates here are really formulated on budgetary numbers. So you want to try to make sure that you're aware that it's measured at year-end and year-end is an actual expenditure number. So it is something less than 100% of a budget number. So give caution to that estimate when you're trying to look at the maximum and want to go all the way up to that. So say, say you want it to, to get all the way to 15%. Just understand the point in which it's measured. It's measured at year-end, it's measured on an actual expenditure and we know the actual expenditures tend to be less than 100% of what we budget.
And that wouldn't have to be bond debt, that could be?
It could be any.
Any type of debt.
I just picked an example just for context and it was 14 million, picked a 20-year term, 4%. Good. Could be multiple debt instruments, multiple projects.
And it could be started in at by 19, because it's even less than the 20, I mean, the 11 then.
You could.
At the 20 is the hump.
Yes, because you want to be aware of where your maximum debt load is coming on. So that's full debt at what we're currently projecting. The other factor there is, you know, we use that 4% interest. We get really good rates right now. So, so we have potentially better debt service payments as, than when we were projecting them a few years ago.
So 4% is really conservative.
So it's conservative at this point and we recalibrate that within the model's assumptions.
That's very helpful, because that, that's what I worry about, is hitting that debt ceiling and understanding when you're measuring is important too, because you don't necessarily realize all the costs immediately.
Right.
So we have to understand that.
So user fees are on page one and I'll, I'll just note the ones that, that you, you talked about. So the master parking payment in lieu, we've provided, provided you some information there. The telecommunication fee was another one that I think some picked up on. And then of course, the road closing, closing fee, well, that's. And then, of course, the road closing, closing fee, well, that's not closing fees for events, but closing fee for, like, I think, mountain and, mountain road closure request. So these are really cost recovery requests for telecommunications because the, the consultant fee is a little bit higher. So we can have that cost recovery adjustment. The other cost recovery is really the road, road closing. That's a, that's a lot of legal notices required for that type of road closing. And then there's the requirement for certified letters to the folks that are adjacent to the property. So, so in this case, there were only a few adjacent properties that were impacted, but in some cases, it's a lot of folks that you gotta send certified letters to. You not only have this, this little legal notice, it's actually, you have to put the full resolution. That's really what the cost is mostly consistent, and it's required to be that way. So again, adjusting, filling the gap of, of rightsizing for cost recovery. And I think the, the master parking payment in Lou, that was really not, it was not a fee increase, it was more of a clarification, so I'll, I'll allow you to read that. The other fees we added was really just an explanation for the parks and rec fees, so that's provided for you. I'm going to jump into the stormwater ERU fee that's on page two. So there really was a two-sided question on this one. So if you, you know, if you ask the question, how much would the ERU fee be to be self-supported for the stormwater fund? Then, you know, you have to also analyze it from the other direction, really what would it be, or, or what would you lose in the program? Or how would it impact the program if the subsidy from the general fund was eliminated? So we looked at it in two ways in talking with Rich, and we've estimated in a number of years that really the full self-supported stormwater would need to be around thirty dollars per ERU. So I've used the estimated ERUs for this fiscal year, 2018, just to get an, an idea of what that, that fee needed to be. For this year, the base budget, it was estimating at six eighty-four. Now, if you look and compare that in contrast to what the past two years estimated are, are actuals were, the average actuals running around six twenty-five. That gives you some perspective, so an actual and a budgetary number. That would mean if you were to leave the ERU fee at twenty-five dollars, eliminate the subsidy, subsidy right now that's a hundred and twenty-six, you're probably going to short the program or reduce the program by eighty-six thousand dollars. So Rich, in talking with him, the, the town engineer, it would really cause you to have to kind of evaluate and have a deferment of certain types of maintenance for outfall repairs and retro bids. So it doesn't mean that it can't be done, he just says that would probably be what you would have to let go first. And then the other thing that could potentially be impacted is that proactive preventative maintenance in the program. It doesn't mean it would be completely eliminated, he said it might be something less than, greater frequency, meaning you could spread your cycle out for monitoring. So, so that's really the perspective of, you know, what if you wanted it to be self-supporting? And then what if you just wanted to eliminate the subsidy? What would the impact be to the overall program?
And can I get a quick review? It's been a few years. An ERU is charged one per household, no matter how big the house is?
Generally, yes.
So it'd be a five-dollar difference per household, and commercial is different.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sure. I think I have that one listed. So stream restoration, page seven, since it's related to the stormwater program this year, there was a question of whether it was public or private. It is on our property, under the circumstances of really the storm drain outfall in the parking lot over a period of time, it's, has the runoff from the parking lot, and it's eroding that particular area. And what's happening is it's destabilizing the stream bank. There's other things with the vegetation that are there, some invasive species that have to be controlled. But primarily, it's the destabilization of the bank in that area, but not on our side, but really our, a joint property. And there is a deck and a patio, I believe, that is being monitored currently right now because it is, it's suspected that it could potentially fall in. And it's pretty close right there at that particular point in that stream. I've seen that one before. It does qualify for the use of that restricted revenue source that we've collected, at least while we have it, which is nutrient, nutrient off-site credits. So most of it will be paid for, so it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think is what it was estimated cost. The nutrient credits are about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So part of, the program is paying for the rest of the balance.
Who owns the patio? You're saying it's a private?
It's private. I do not know who the property owner is.
I mean, so it's not the town, but so we're liable for their patio?
Because the, really the runoff is coming from really the, the outfall from the parking lot, the drainage outfall that's running off of the parking lot into the stream on that side. So it's runoff is being, coming from our property into the stream, and it's creating erosion issues. And it, this has been a long issue with this particular, you, you know the history behind this one.
Don't understand.
And it's gotten to the point that it's, I guess, become more critical to monitor.
Do we have other issues? And I thought we couldn't, we couldn't hold somebody responsible for something like that. I'm sure there are other problems like that where an HOA pond is getting runoff from streams above it, and it's causing damage to them. But can, you know, I didn't know that they could hold somebody accountable to that.
I can get some clarity on the liability question. I think this is exactly what the nutrient offset credits were meant to be used for, for protecting the environment and ensuring that these streams are healthy. And I think that's responsibility of the stormwater management program. But I will get, I will ask the question, fair question.
Further down this, down on the road, there's an area there that there's a cul-de-sac. I mean, it's been brought up, who, who's doing the maintenance on that? And DOT doesn't do it, I guess. Or they do it very infrequently, so just same issue. Are they, are we gonna, are they being held responsible? But yes, okay.
And is the timing for this, the right timing if you are planning to do?
Exactly the right time with the MFC project.
Because the runoff will be for, because the reason I bring it up is, for Breckenridge, I remember, we had the pond, and Harris Theater was building their new section, and the entire runoff came from the Harris Theater. And entire erosion came from Harris Theater and gutted our pond to, like, groundwater, and we had to completely dredge our thing. So you have a lot of reconstruction and digging and everything, and then again, you had to redo this thing. Is the timing correct? Is that the reason I'm asking, Harid? Is this, what goes first, you know, the construction of MFC and then this one, or which one?
And, and I think they are coordinating those efforts, is, that, that is going on behind the scenes.
Or is that, this can be incorporated into that? Or into that?
It is not part of the MFC renovation project, but they, they will, they will be in sync together. We, we've already had those discussions about not doing something that compromises the other project on the other side.
You're making improvements to a parking area that has some stormwater drainage failings already, so you potentially could be adding impervious surface, surface area that I imagine can add to and aggravate the problem and advance it even more so.
We don't want to fix it twice, let's fix it once.
That's my only thing, yes.
Can, can I just ask a quick question? You know, clearly, when, there are buffers, and you're not allowed to build within the buffer. I'm probably asking something you've already all talked about, but, so if the private owner, I'm assuming, did not build within the buffer? Or do we, do we know the answer to that question?
I know that question's been asked in the past, because this goes back so far. So I'll, I'll talk to Rich and see if I can get some clarification.
Was it permitted, was this patio? Okay.
Because I remember, I, I know I've heard this conversation before. That's how old it is. All right, so, so transportation planner and?
I had, I had a question about the recovery fees and the other things.
Page one.
Page one, user fees?
User fee, on a slightly additional topic, on the communication fee. What is our agreement with Google and AT&amp;T? Because they are digging all the places, and they are filling it up, and there are divots on the road. And at some point of time, they will come and fill it up, they're temporarily filling it. It's a lot of work to the public works department and to go and see and manage it. Are we having some kind of agreement that they are, it's, it's a, it's, it's a lot of work? Are we in some way, the town getting compensated to babysit them, in other words, for what they're not doing?
It is part of our function to, to work with contractors, depending on where the project is and what they're doing. They either have to get our permission, or they have to get the private homeowner's permission to work in those areas. Blake's, Blake's addressed this question before. He, he does go out and make sure that they've returned things to the, an acceptable condition. There is a lot of time and effort sometimes in making sure that happens, especially in a timely manner. And, and, and of course, we filled a lot of the complaints. A month or two ago, we provided some information in order to try to help council members when you get those complaints about how to filter those calls so that we can help people. They often think it's one contractor, and it's not. The, the contractors are not the people that have arranged for the encroachments. So somebody has to shepherd that process through, and, and it is the service we provide to the community.
And obviously, you guys do a great job, no questions about that. More than that is, all are public roads. Most of the things that they are cutting through, like making a small divot, and they're going through it. And over a period of time, you know, the bumps are coming in. At some point of time, they're coming, and they'll, they initially fill it up, and they are sinking. So who will go behind and basically start marking them and make sure every small things are done? Because it's, it's, it's a lot of work. So are we going to hire a consultant and then bill them, saying, okay, hey, across the town? Because they, they are carriers, they have a purpose, they are doing it. And how do we basically make sure our work is done?
I, I, I think we can provide some information separately.
That question to have answered, but I don't know that it's germane to what we're trying to cover right now.
Yes, I, I'm going to say because of the communication fees and all the things that are coming up, because we, we are losing a lot of time in this one. We have to have some kind of strategy because for the next one, two years, they are still in town and digging it up and losing a lot of our manpower.
Do we have the legislative authority to make such a fee, or no?
I don't believe so, but I don't know that myself, I've got a, I've got a follow-up.
It's not a fee, it's basically give them, like, you know, that's what, for example, like, next week, they messed up with our irrigation. We got a, our private contractor come up with a bill, saying, handing over the bill to them, hey, this is between AT&amp;T, Google. You figure out what happened, and this is all the damages. So that's, the town has, will have, go to the same thing, because again, Blake will come, it's all public roads, and?
So maybe as a separate subject, I think you're talking cost recovery for the MFC.
Exactly.
So, and that's, that's a perfect, um, question, a perfect question, but?
Yeah, might be, yeah.
I think it's a little bit off.
That's, I agree.
It's not it. Get us out of your mind, maybe.
Okay.
So then the next two are, we'll take together, it's page three or four, are the transportation planner and the K nine unit, Martha, did you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to actually, I'll start at the top. We, we've talked about lap salary sum and, and trying to connect our fiscal year seventeen budget, our estimate, estimates where we figure out will end, and then a comparison to the fiscal year eighteen budget. So we've done that analysis to try to pull all those numbers together. So the first thing that we did was really went back and looked at our estimates. And with, without belaboring the fact that our, our server failure happened at a very inopportune time, we went back to review information in the system. And across the board, I tell you that those estimates were probably about two percent low. So, so that's about two hundred and fif- two hundred and forty thousand dollars of difference. We've talked about the hundred and thirty-nine that we took out and applied to operations, so that's a component of that. The, the, the single largest component is vacant positions. We've taught, we, we had high turnover this year. We also added eight positions that took some time to fill. And so our recruiting extended from two weeks to nine months on some positions. It was one point one four million more than even that one thirty-nine we've already talked about. I would tell you, a substantial portion of that was in our police department. We had vacancies, we added four officers, we filled a captain's position, we hired a crime data analysis. The positive is all but one of those is now filled, and we hope that the offer process for the last one will get us to full staffing in our police department. We have not used the extent of part-time salaries. That's two primary departments, one is Parks and Rec, where most, most of our part-timers are. The other was, and we mentioned this a little bit before, when we talked about the enterprise system, we had part-time salaries in the IT department, and Jay left and did not work a substantial amount of that money that we put in. So some in part-time budget. We did not have all of the holiday and overtime that were in the budget, and that, that cycles and is, is, it fluctuates. And then some related to those vacancies, other benefits like our pension and the law enforcement officer separation. When we aren't employing those, we're also not incurring those expenses. And then our unemployment allocation has been lower than the thirty-five thousand, but we're required to keep a base amount in a bank. They, they changed that system several years ago. So it could be timing, it could be no one's applying for unemployment for the town. So that is the components of the difference between the fiscal year seventeen and the estimated budget. Then if you try to compare where we're going to end up with what we're asking for with eighteen, very clear and simple, it's the four hundred and thirty thousand dollars we've asked you for for merit. It's the modest adjustment in our healthcare costs this year that we think will reap rewards in the following years, and the additional positions that we've requested. And that's the real delta between where we expect to end for seventeen and where we are asking for for eighteen. Did provide some additional information, the, the recruiting for our fire marshal and our inspections continues to be difficult. But we have both of those in the process and are hoping to get them hired so that that evens out as well. Turnover and turnover dollars was high. It, it, it's as high as it probably was in two thousand eight. But again, it, it circles, the, as the economy picks up, people are leaving because people are paying higher salaries to attract them. And when we put this all together, I think we will have evened it out and addressed our concerns.
Turnover is on page, but just a correlation between that and transportation.
With, with respect to Jay's leaving early and then that, will there be, I know we may have potential contracting needs with the enterprise and all that stuff. Would that come out of, would that, would, have those dollars already been allocated to potential anticipated need of contract services, part-time services?
When we talked about the enterprise system last week, we mentioned we had moved $50,000 from the personnel line to the operations to support that.
That's why, okay.
Yes.
All right, so move from-
And we have hired the FTE-NIT that had been vacant since Jay left.
Oh, okay.
We'll have to full-
I had a question about, you bring a good point about the law enforcement separation thing. I think when we had a meeting with the Legislative Assembly, like when we went for the, that day, we had a meeting with Nelson Dollar. And at that day, they were going to pass the-
The judge, we can't hear you.
Sorry.
Firefighters.
Okay.
You talking firefighters?
Yeah, firefighters. They were trying to include the firefighters. Did that pass?
Still in discussion.
Still in discussion. If that comes in, do we know an estimate of how much that would increase?
We have not estimated yet. It would be an unfunded mandate that would be passed on to the town.
So, like, is that something, because once, if, suppose that it passes, I'm assuming, then what is that dollar amount? Do we have that, something that we can have it?
Until we know what the legislation says, it's difficult to do those estimates. That's another service the league provides us. They'll calc, they'll gather and collect and produce that data. They'll pull all of us to gather that information.
Does Kerry already is estimating on their end how much that would add up to theirs? So, I think it would be good on our side to just, as an estimate or something, to do it. Because obviously, it's, these are all unfunded stuff. But that will pretty much come and add up. Because we have, what, 76 in our firefighters?
Forty-nine. I think it's 53.
Fifty-three. So, that's, that's a good chunk of the things. And how does it play? That would also add up.
Happy to look at it. There's not enough information known about what would pass. So, acknowledge Kerry has come up with a number. Don't really know how it would relate based on what the legislation becomes.
Let me ask the other way. Is, how does it work? Is if the legislation is passed and it is passed on to the towns? Okay. So, is that, we are-
There are three components. There's the employee contribution, which is at 6%, which has been that way forever. There's what the legislature will put in every year. The employer, meaning us, we have a piece of that also that we have to then contribute.
Okay.
And then there's returns from the actual investments. All of those go into this.
Okay.
So, I think it's, would be very difficult to come up with a number to fix into the budget without knowing where the, what the target is. We don't, we don't know.
So, but is it something that we have to adjust mid, like, budget year? Or if that, because I'm just trying to, you know, play it because-
I don't think it would be-
Or is it, can we wait for the next budget cycle? That's what I'm, that's all I'm questioning, that's all.
I don't think it would be that material.
Okay.
I think there, there could be a change, but it all depends on what the legislators kick in.
Okay.
For their piece. The returns have been pretty decent this first quarter of 2000, you know, calendar year 2007. So, all those things go into play.
Okay.
The actual rate of return, the target rate was lowered by a half a basis point, I think to 72, which had a pretty insignificant impact on us also. That would raise us, raise what we have to contribute. It's not lowering it. So, but it also, we're going to ask more from the General Assembly to fill that gap.
I just wanted to throw in that because that was like, first time I heard and then that was just brought up. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure we captured it. Okay. Couple of questions asked about the position request. So, let's talk about first about the transportation planner. And the real core question was transportation engineer versus transportation planner. And we did evaluate and explore that prior to making the request. Currently, our transportation engineer is a contracted on-call service with Mott McDonald, who helps review those TIA's. Outside of that, unless we would begin actively designing and building our own roads and even perhaps sidewalks and other projects, we wouldn't have enough work for a transportation engineer. We have an overload of planning and preparation work at this point in time. And as we, especially as we project more and more work with transit and the follow-up that will happen out of our transportation plan, a lot of that's just administrative work. We all know how we rely on Ben Howe and just figuring out which of his five meetings he needs to go to is just a reason to really recommend that it's a support for that department. It also allows more than one person to have that knowledge and expertise, help with plan review, get that depth and breadth of experience. So, that is the recommendation of planner versus engineer. It is a lower-level position. Unfortunately for us, we have an opportunity to try to get some more transportation skills in our town engineer. So, that's something that Todd and I have already talked about as we work on a job description, is some of that might, we might have some opportunity there to do that.
Question. I guess this position was decided before Rich?
It was recommended before Rich left. But Rich leaving doesn't change my recommendation.
So, because then we need a town engineer.
Correct.
Fill up the town engineer position again, right? So, and do we know how much we spent on the engineering, the transportation?
We don't spend anything.
On contracting service, like for the TIA's and all?
We don't spend anything. We pass all those costs through to the people that are paying for the TIA.
So, we don't do our own, like, peer consulting to them?
They are the peer consultant for us.
Well, explain, they work for us, but it's the developer or the person who comes with the plan, they actually pay the bill. But the contractor is ours and works for us and reports to us. It's just they pay the bill.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. The pastor, so it's pretty efficient. Doesn't really cost us anything.
Okay.
Okay. The other position we talked about was our K-9 unit, which is an officer and a dog. So, we've provided some extensive information about how that unit is used, both in our jurisdiction and externally, and where we have gaps in service because of just the one K-9 unit, as well as the other obligations on that K-9 unit. More importantly, we've illustrated the value in drug forfeiture proceeds that come back to us that we are able to put back in and purchase things like equipment and other things that help support the department. And we, we don't have to buy those things when those drug forfeiture proceeds come in. Did not put it in here, but I will tell you that Chief Andrews and I have talked about, and there's a very viable opportunity to get a grant towards the purchase of the K-9. We have not budgeted that yet, but we feel fairly optimistic that we would not have to pay for the K-9. And we're going to continue to explore that.
And the amount of recovery is just since October of 2016.
Correct.
I just wanted to point that out because that isn't even six months, really. So, seems like-
I guess that's- Yeah, good and bad. That's exactly-
It's good and bad, right? But-
Thank you, thank you for doing that. I do appreciate the Q and A style that you guys-
Thank you.
Is this K-9 only we have it or are there, because I'm seeing it, that we go to Roseville and other departments, right?
It's mutual aid. And what happens if, for example, Sergeant Rodriguez and ARCO are in training or can't come back to work because of rest? We will call for mutual aid. What happens is delay in response and the things that can happen because of a delay in response. So, we do share, but there's factors that go into what happens when you have to seek that mutual aid.
But in reality, every, every town has their K-9 unit.
I would bet Roseville does not have a K-9.
So, that's-
Yes.
But this is good, like, and this is mostly for the, which is actually good and bad, I kind of agree with the mayor, is it, I want to make sure this is not, the seizure was not from town of Morrisville type, however.
I would say the airport being in Morrisville benefits us.
It wasn't bad, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'll touch on a couple of more, just briefly, so we can move along. Page eight, we'll identify really some estimates for payment and lieu. Shows you the current value that we have right now, some pending payments, and then some projected payments, just to give you an understanding. I think you'll see some of this with Parkland Payment and Lieu when Martha talks about cash flow and the project tracker. So, that just gives you an understanding, perspective there. Merit and turnover, as Martha mentioned, those are on page five, and lap salary, just hearing those pages for you.
So, Councilmember Garamella asked about the peer comparison for merits. Just going back to that, that's on page five. We're showing you last year, two prior years and this year, what we've been told and what, again, all of this is, everybody is in the same place as we are, which is, this is what their proposal is. But some of this information is as current as last week's managers' meeting, what people are asking for. You'll see, there's COLAs here, which is just an across-the-board, without any performance evaluation for some, but most are merit and based on a very similar merit pool methodology as we've discussed earlier tonight.
I have one question on, just going back to the payment and loos. Just real quickly, I did one question on the Parkland Payment and Lieu for the, I'm on page eight, when it says total 3.587 million, is that, is that, that's obviously including the projected payments, but at what point in time are we projecting that total amount will be in there?
Okay, so just a quick, the pending payments are, the difference between the two is pending payments are projects that are approved. There is a PIL and every time a lot is registered, they are required to come in and make that payment. So, it comes in as lots are recorded. And so, anything that you've approved, and we know that they're building, they're developing, and PIL is going to come in, that's in the pending. It could modify some, say, for example, as they're charting something out, they lose a lot. It might change for something like that. But the rate is established, we have a projected amount, and then over time, that money will come in. The projected payments are those that are really still before you. You haven't approved them, but there's some PIL that's associated with that recommendation coming forward to you. If you approve it, they would become part of a pending. If you don't, they would fall off. But we can't tell you when this money would be in the account.
The amount in hand is the current, that's, how much is it?
In hand is 2.4.
Okay. And the reason I ask is as we look at other projects we want to work on, you know, I like the fact that we've got the pending and thinking positively, we're going to get the projected, that we might have more money that's in there now that we could, you know, use for investing in, let's say, another park, maybe, that we want to do.
Plus, I think last year, we put aside one cent of our tax base for street projects or road projects. So, in addition to payment lieu for the streets.
Yes.
We have additional monies that we have.
Yeah, and for the streets, that's, that can be used for, I mean, just, what can we use that money for?
Let's not talk about spending yet.
Okay.
I'm excited to, but I'm going to hold-
Well, we're going to talk about that in a few minutes.
All right. Thank you, sorry.
Nope. There's a couple more in here. One is, we did, we did get a question about the vehicle tax, the vehicle fee, excuse me. So, we've told you how much a five-dollar, an additional five-dollar increment would be. That's on page two. The other question, I think, in here that we haven't really talked about is the wayfinding signs. Really tried to explain really what that meant, but the real, the real message here is every sign we need to replace or add is somewhere between $5 and $10,000. So, it's just a matter of knocking them out. We've prioritized our parks as the first ones that we feel need the signs replaced. I do, is the temporary sign out there? All right, we have a temporary town hall sign until Morrisville Carpenter Road is done. And we prioritized our buildings after our parks. So, external and then internal. The wayfinding is a myriad, it's not just our welcome signs, it's identifying where our landmarks are, if we want directional signage. But again, really, it's hard cost of putting signs up is what this amount is. So, we're telling you, you've got a chunk in this year and likely next year as well. Last question is the question about Morrisville Parkway and the slope. We are, it is not our property. We are looking to evaluate what it would cost to provide a level of service. It would be a slope mower rental and staff time, but we're evaluating that. We'll have more to provide on that.
Everybody out there with a swing blade?
You need a part-time job?
I, one comment I just wanted to, for those following at home. I, the booklet that we were following, a lot of the questions came from, I appreciate, just to clarify, like, if you turn to page 46, look at governing body, you see that, you see you've broken down how many, the new initiatives and priority, and that came to a little over $4 million, and then you bring it down to total expenditure. So, I think that's great. And same thing with, like, if you turn to page 49, finance, you list the debt cost, the new initiative, that's $200,000, then, but you put that in operations. So, that's all, I'm just, am I correct? And so, that's where it's accounted for. But I like the idea that you break it out, it's easy to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Besides the previous discussion about lab funding and all that, that goes into salary and benefits.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So, let's move into fund balance, just a quick refresher. You know, a fund balance is measured as a percentage of the expenditures in that year. So, fund balances actually can be found on page, it's a quick snapshot. Fund balance, we have a range, so we want to stay at least a minimum of 25% of expenditures. Remember, it's measured at year end, not at the tier year, but at the completion of the year. And you want to have at least the target or the highest threshold at 45%. You have leeway to really decide if you wish that your disposal, really, anything that's above that 45%, you have options to potentially utilize it or preserve it, continue to reserve it, maybe for a larger expenditure that may come in the future. It's based on actual expenditures plus the transfers, that's just logistical. But generally, it grows when revenues exceed expenditures. A little trickiness to it, not all revenues are free and available, meaning that there are some restrictions with some of those revenues. So, street payment and lieu, for example, is received in the general fund, it's a restricted source. Like, it's called out specifically, if you were to look at the CAFRA, it's Schedule 1, that speaks directly for the general fund fund balance. And that's the schedule I'm shifting to and utilizing. It shows that street payment and lieu as a restricted source. So, there's other things. So, your capital reserves are committed items. So, again, it calls those out separately. But generally, if you look at it on whole, revenues that exceed expenditures is what you're kind of- you're kind of looking for. It's used for unforeseen events, really one-time items, capital items, you could shift it to reserve if you wish, and you could do that at any point in time. I'd say, following an audit is really when you know for sure what you're dealing with, and, you know, that might be when you want to mobilize. You could use your estimates at budget if you want to shift more at that time. So, currently, fund balance and estimates for fiscal year 18, or fiscal year 17, remember, the estimating is actually a two-year forecasting window. So, you have to estimate for your current year, based on what you think the expenditures are going to be. Those can tend to move between now, the time which you estimate them, and the time that the year end is completed, that can impact that percentage, which in turn affects your following year. So, it's called a two-year window of estimate, between your current year and your budgetary year that you're talking about. So, the budgetary year is 54.5, it would be based on 100% budget, so that would be kind of your worst-case scenario in that particular projection. Some variables to consider, when you're, again, you're looking in that two-year window, your current year, there's a lot that can occur, there's a lot of variables, it's a complex calculation or estimation. PO rollovers in the current year have an influence to really what gets restricted and reserved. So, if you are having a higher year where you're carrying over, rolling over purchase orders that are encumbered, or there's progress paid, but they haven't been completed, well, that impacts really what your estimate is going to look like, and sometimes you might not get a clear image of that until you get further along into June. Subsequent years' fund balance appropriations. So, what that means is, in your budgetary year, so remember, two-year window, so current year and your budget year, if we're anticipating we're going to appropriate money in the budget year we're looking at, then it's going to know that at the time in which the audit is being worked on, and it's going to account for the fact that you have already moved ahead in the future year and appropriated some of that money. So, just giving you a better picture when you have your audit. So, again, you know, when you are looking at appropriating fund balance, for whatever purposes, at this time of the season, just know that it's going to impact your current year. Restricted revenue sources, we talked a little bit about those, and the committed items, committed items are things that you designate, that you want to put aside, and those tend to be those capital reserve funds. Anything that you send out to another fund tends to be a restricted element specifically for the projects that they're for. So, that's just kind of a fund balance in a nutshell. Did you want to add something?
I'm just going to make a comment. When you look at the, that percentage over 45, remember, for the forecast, the way we've been approaching our budgeting is using that capacity for one-time things. Those one-time things are not forecast, so they are not taken into account here, so that's capacity to use, and that's why you see it goes down, because we're taking those and putting them into these one-time things. It's just not reflected in the forecast till we have those discussions. The forecast is the regular routine, ongoing stuff that we know.
And obviously, as our year closes out in 17, you know, we could improve the number, we could maybe it's not going to be less than, it gets measured on the expenditures in that year, the actual expenditures. So, there's that differential between the actual year that you're spending for and the budgetary year.
So, that's just a forecast, right?
It's just a forecast, it gives you perspective.
It could be flatter down to, right?
Depending on what you do.
At this point, fiscal year 17 is still a forecast. Until June 30 passes, it's a forecast. Then we'll fix that number, and it'll be the one we operate from and recalibrate after... That's what happens, is we do the audit and all the final cleanup, then it's a certain number.
So, the one-time expense is also part of the fund balance?
We use fund balance to support putting one-time things in our budget. You're taking this capacity and putting it to use for non-routine expenses.
Something I think folks might not really realize is the policies really targets that unassigned fund balance for the general fund. That's what it's looking for, but remember, you've got other funds that have balances that could come into play when you have cash flow.
And that's a good transition, because the next segment really starts with those estimates of fund balance. So, we've taken the project tracker form, so we're on this one now. So, you're familiar with this format. I did not update a Gantt chart or anything. As we continue our litany of things we don't have access to, we have some data to recreate for timelines, et cetera. The fact that Jeannie and I keep every piece of paper that ever lived will help us, but it's tedious.
Can we go back to the previous one, like, for the fund balance thing? So, for, for example, like, the CIP, for example, or any of the things that, it's more for the council, like, that is a good time to talk. Any of the long-term projects, like that Marshall Carpenter, that we put 2.7, right?
I think they're going to get to that.
Get to that.
There's already a...
So, CIP.
There's already an allocation of a chunk of money, like we did last year, that they are recommending.
Right, so there's some here.
One-time use, and that's, right, that's page 23 from here. So, there's a bunch of things we're talking about. One is cash flows for projects, one is using some of this one-time for one-time, which is page 23.
Yes.
I think, just let them, I said, let them get through their presentation first.
Emergencies are coming up.
It's all kind of tied.
Okay.
Nice job stepping us through.
So, I'm going to talk about this one first, is I've updated this sheet, and really, I think the thing I will show you has mostly changed, is we had a number of projects in a pipeline that you've been talking about, we had some other things down here. Anything that we've... So, we've made assumptions, lots of assumptions. Everything we've recommended in the budget is taken into account on this page, just so that you can see the effect of the recommendations on the budget. It's not intending to indicate you have to approve it, or you have approved it, but we had to start with assumptions somewhere. So, it includes Morrisville Carpenter Road, it includes Town Center Core Roundabout and those improvements, it includes the Airport Boulevard Sidewalk, and that's important because that's a cash flow project. So, you see all of those as projects currently in the pipeline, and we don't have any that's not in the pipeline, because we're trying to capture our needs. Then, you still have that list of cash flow projects that we're using that unassigned fund balance for, and that's why they're important. And the real purpose for why we started this was also taking into consideration some protection factor for things that cost more than what we've budgeted, or unforeseen circumstances, and how to stay ahead of that curve. So, that's what this page is, and it feeds into your front page. And really, the first two numbers are the estimates that Jeannie's just talked about, what we think our cash fund balance will be, and what we think our expenditures were for fiscal year 17, because we've got that minimum 25%, so we kind of take that off the top. And then, what it really shows you is, if you want to internally, this is just a paper transaction, but know you've got enough in your rainy day fund for unexpected circumstances, and we've illustrated those at a 5% cost differential and a 10% cost differential, what that cushion would be. More importantly, on this page to me, is how we're using that money for cash flow, and why, at least in my opinion, the higher balance serves us well, because we don't have to borrow 6.3 to execute a $9 million contract. This also shows you worst-case scenario, because for any of our grant projects, it's all out at the front end, and then we'll start getting reimbursements back. So, this is a declining balance that you end up freeing up more and more of your cash flow capacity, the further you get into projects. I hope that this changes a lot before we talk about it again, because there's a lot of projects we're hoping that'll be through by June 30. So, will we reconcile, we'll know that we made it or not, and it gives you just a truer, more accurate picture. So, that would be the next great improvement for this one. Clearly, the two biggest projects we have that we need cash flow right now, one is already underway, our Crabtree Hatcher Creek project, we are using cash flow for that. That's really what we're using our Parkland payment and lieu for right now, is cash flow towards that project, and then the rest through the general fund. The Morrisville Carpenter Road is the other big one, and we know that hopefully, we're needing that by October. And we've even put in, just to be as conservative as possible, cost overruns on even those projects, but just a cushion factor. So, you get down to a remaining unassigned fund balance that's in the negative, so don't fret, we've already talked about some of them. We have other funds that have cash that's not designated for anything yet, so we've set aside one cent on our tax rate for roadways. We're not taking it away, but we're borrowing against it, because it's free cash, it's not designated for a project. Same with our capital investments program reserves. We've got, we're taking in that, we've got that Parkland payment and lieu pending money. It's going to come in over the timeframe of these projects. We are recommending that sidewalks capital project fund. The money that we're recommending you put in that will help us cash flow that Airport Boulevard project. And we have some excess estimated in our Church Street Capital Project that can go towards our cricket field lights, so there's capacity there. So, when you get down to the unassigned fund balance, it's much less than what you just saw that we have, but it also still shows you, you have even wiggle room if things would come up that you want to spend money on. So, we're not at $0 here, but this is what this tries to illustrate. Mayor?
Just two quick clarification questions. One, the Crabtree Hatcher Creek Greenway, that's, these are, are going to be reimbursed?
Correct.
So, that's a grant, maybe if you could add that in parentheses or something, that that's, money will eventually get back? And then, the Morrisville Carpenter Road, you have 6.3 million. Is that assuming, that's not, is that, are we partially financing this, or what?
Yes, the recommendation is to finance, short-term, over seven years, the 2.7.
Okay, just the 2.7.
Correct.
So, we do need the 6.2?
Correct. And we've calculated that into debt service payments as a part of the budget.
And some of that will get back also, through the lap.
The 6.3 should come back, the 2.7 is our cost, and that's really why they're separate.
What do we call it? That's not really, well, I guess it is a grant. Is a lap considered a grant?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a creepie.
All right, so maybe on those two, if you could just, are those the only ones like that on here?
Almost all of those cash flow needs are grants of some kind or another.
We'll get money, this money back.
I guess we could think of them as reimbursables?
Yeah.
We'll get reimbursed.
So, then...
Just so that we all know that it's not gone forever.
Right, right, exactly, yeah, I was like...
Yes, all of this comes back into your fund balance, and then you can reuse it for something else.
Fantastic. So, the dates that you have to the right of each of these line items, through 3/31/19 and through 6/30/19, that's the date we expect the project to finish, and then the reimbursement probably takes several months after that for all the processing, or how is that the timeline when you expect the reimbursement?
Now, the time that I've put there is when we expect that project to be complete, because we would know, for the most part, if the project has been in budget or not, whether we have it back or not, we would know.
You can make, actually, progress requests on a quarterly basis for most of the grants that we tend to work with, with the exception of other, certain ones, and there's a very few and far between that you see those.
So, there could be some cash flow coming from these projects based on milestones?
Yes, if we didn't have any reimbursement flow, we're still going to be positive. So, that's a kind of case that we're just, just examples. Worst case, we're still have a positive number at the end of the day, but you're going to have in the annual year that replenishment of some of those dollars based on...
Great.
Yeah, and we're going to, we're going to sort of segue into CIP, but there's a couple of budget requests related to advancing CIP as well. One is the Public Works Facilities Study, and we also know that there's potential collaboration efforts with Wake County related to not only that, but potentially Cedar Fork District Park, and Cedar Fork District Park relates to one of our prioritized CIP projects. But what we're really showing you is, is there's money coming through the pipeline as you want to activate those next CIP projects. Jeannie's going to talk about this, but a reminder, our real refresh is scheduled for fiscal year 19 of the CIP.
A question on this roadway and transportation reserve, the 441-350, that's the cent on our...
That's the, now, that's the fiscal year 17 amount that's in your reserve and set aside.
Yes.
The current budget includes another recommendation for that, so you'd have that as well.
But that's restricted on what we can use it for, right?
It is, but for cash flow, those restrictions really, it's what you can spend it on, we can borrow against it, it's our own money.
Okay, so, yeah.
You committed that money.
We're committed, but, you know, we just want to be sure that it's restricted to what is not...
That's why it's in that capital project fund.
All right.
Reserve fund, I'm sorry. I get my words mixed up.
All right, do any other questions?
Yes, just a couple more assumptions, and I like the disclaimer at the top, right? So, the project dates are pretty certain, at least right now, you're putting on there.
I will caveat that, of, I did not update projects' dates, but I am not aware of huge slippages on any projects. Thank you.
But for assumptions, then, a year from now, we'll have a better idea on a lot of this, and then, it looks like in April of 2019, the big projects are completed, so we'd know by then. So, that's when you can, you would think that we'd be reimbursed by the time the project ends, or would it take a year after it's done?
And as Jeannie mentioned, it's incumbent upon us to be filing those progress payment requests, and there is, there's a 30-to-60-day lag of payment, but our role is, is to request the money on a regular quarterly basis, and we've already put some things in place to make sure that happens, not only in our department, but with finances as well. So, we've got redundancy to make sure those things are happening.
Great, thank you.
Also, the grants have reporting requirements, too, that we're legally obligated to do certain things under the receipt of that money, and so, that's why there's that tag-team approach between the capital projects manager and the finance director, to be able to ensure that tracking, reporting, and requesting is done in accordance and in compliance.
Great.
You ready to move forward?
Great, thank you.
So, long-range projections, you can find a projection on page 100 of your book, I try to give you some standard assumptions, just to give you a feel for really what is at play in those projections. In the long-range forecasts, it's really an opportunity for awareness, it's not a plan, but it allows you to kind of test the waters, really what these decisions you're making on this budget year, how it may impact the future. So, whenever you are adding new people, you know, there's that routine expense that gets added to every year thereafter that, unless you've had a time limit on it, which I'm not sure we do that. We take into account in your forecasting really revenue characteristics, so here's where we do the analysis on our major revenue sources. We follow guidelines of categorizing them based on their characteristics, because we want to make sure that we understand and are conservative in our approach of estimating, not only the budget year, but even the futures years, to make sure we're not overstating and setting this up for failure in the future. But we want you to see opportunity, and we also want you to see potential challenges ahead. So, an area where the forecast model helps is really looking at that debt service. When you make a decision to bring up debt service, it's impacting multiple years as you move forward, and so, it's very important to kind of look out and... you move forward, and so it's very important to kind of look out over a period of time and see what that impact's doing, and how much it's drawing away your resources really for operational support. So that's why you have that percentage, is to really keep that healthy balance in check, that you're capable of still delivering that on a growing operational demand with the resources that you're putting in play. At the same time, making sure that you're taking care of your obligations, which debt is your first and foremost obligation in your budget. Projected assumptions really are 100%. We talked about conservative approaches. We use that base budget strategy, which I think works really well and gets you to focus on what's really making things happen and change. It takes that operational, those dollars, it turns the lights on, and validates it every year. We scrub it as much as possible every year and challenge ourselves for that, but it allows you to focus on really what's going to make the difference with your budgetary decision.
Because it's time to go home.
I call it a snapshot projection, so keep that in perspective. It's based on the tendencies of today, the influences of today, a lot can change. And most importantly, the decisions you make are what could potentially change the future projections. So your decisions are first and foremost one of the key influential factors in long-range forecasting, but other influences or economic issues that can occur. So that's really, in a nutshell, really the purpose and the reason why we need to probably pause and kind of take a look and make sure that we test that, kind of get it forward. Again, it's not a budget, it's just an assumption, just gives you some awareness. It's not a plan, but it gives you some context, maybe for how your decisions could impact the future. Any questions?
You tell I like that subject, right?
So CIP, probably my next favorite subject. So here's a, just to check in, as Martha already mentioned, I think she was really probably focused more on getting that citizen information on our needs of the community. So that's kind of going out, polling the community with that national survey, and it starts to generate new idea, project ideas, really validates really the existing projects or causes retooling, but it's also your prime opportunity to do the same, to take that information you're hearing from the community, and how do you want to shuffle that, those, those project concepts? How do you want those to look? Do you want to add, you want to take away, based on the information that you're getting? So that's really the focus of 2018. And then it's going to, with that information, we're going to move into 2019, which is really your four-year CIP update. So that focuses on taking those new, those projects that might be refreshed, any new projects, and now reprioritizing, evaluating them and reprioritizing. And you're going to look at that top 10, is that really your top 10 that you want to carry forward? But simultaneously, as we're working on, you know, resuming these projects, we're still working on your top 10. So it's a simultaneous event. Until you tell us that they're reprioritized, we're still working to trying to bring those projects that are in your top 10 right now that you prioritize to fruition. So what do those, what do those projects look like? And of course, the ultimate goal is really getting your top 10, aligning resources, and that's what we're trying to do, to bring those projects to the community. So some of the things in the budget year already, public works facility renovation, we have a master plan study, money already appropriated. And that's kind of that first really initial step, going to know what you're, you're working with. There's been some changes, I think, with the roadway, with airport, with aviation parkway, and other opportunities with partnering with maybe Wake County. Those things we need to understand to really know how to move forward. Historic Christian, Christian Church parking lot expansion, that's in motion. You really did that in fiscal year 2017. Design is in progress, and actually, we're trying to make the inside, do some improvements internally as best we can, to really kind of set the stage for maybe that senior potential or any other expansion of programs, and maximize the usage of this asset you have. Parking lot's key to this. Doing some internal improvements, pretty key as well, but I'd say the parking lot's kind of critical. And then, of course, your other items that you have on the list, you know, there's conversation, of course, about around things around town center, and there's a couple of the items that don't necessarily fall, I think, within that specific focus area that you're looking at, but still conversations about town center in general can potentially impact these future projects. Some things to note, I have a little note at the bottom, need to create a project profile. So this is going forward in what we need to look at, Morrisville Community Park and Crabtree Hatcher Creek three-way extension. So there's currently not a project concept for either of those, we need to retool that. So that would be a part of that information that we bring back after the survey.
Yeah, especially in light of some of the discussions we're having with MAFC. I mean, some of these projects, we may want to take a look at sooner than later.
Your decision to fund MAFC sort of fooled MCP, Morrisville Community Park aside, so it, it needs to be retooled and looked at as an individual project now.
Do you know what's, what's the Crabtree Hatcher Greenway extension?
You want to explain?
That's just recognizing that as we moved the Crabtree Hatcher extension forward, and at that time did not have the go-trangle parcel, we took that leg out. And without making any assumptions, we just know that that's an important connection, so we want to capture it. I think that's the mistake we made with Morrisville Community Park, is it got bundled up and kind of got left out of the mix. We're trying not to do the same thing.
I'm so glad you, you pointed that out because I've been asked by numerous residents about that connection.
Yeah, it's not decisions are made, it's just capturing it and making sure it's part of what you're talking about, is, and those are the two we know, based on other work we've done this year, that are gaps in our CIP.
That need a little bit of, this is a good list. I was, I always like to see how much potential cost to kind of just see how, you know, the various weighting is.
Page one or two.
I know, but even on this. But the thing is, with the sports facility improvements, that includes our lights and, you know, maybe better bathrooms, that, all that kind of stuff, but are we going to fine-tune that a little bit, or is that just still?
Yes, that one in particular is, a couple things is, it's phased, and the first phase really wasn't the lights, it was the road. And so with Wake Convenience Center discussions, we may have much more opportunity to activate that first phase.
Very good, thank you. All right, moving forward?
We'll have another more depth CIP discussion this fall.
Yes, so when the survey is, the results return from the survey, we can have a better conversation, where do we go next as a group? How do you feel about the information you're hearing is what's most important at that point?
Just on the side, on page 100, like, I think, the long-range forecast.
Right.
2018, 2019, and this one, especially the expenditure. Did you leave it by mistake, like the insurance 7% increase every year, or was it just?
No, 7% increase is just a healthy number based on our experience and, and working with our Hill Chestnut, what do you think is our...
Yeah, we will be able to modify that to, based on what happens as we deploy our new healthcare plan. We just, we didn't make arbitrary changes to the model without some evidence as to how it might change at this point.
Because I haven't actually looked it up this morning, like 24% increase in the next four years.
So under the current plan, as it is today, that would be a number that would be a helping number to utilize as an assumption. I think with your changes, I think you have to allow yourself to gain experience, that's just in the world of long-range forecasting, is you, you need to have a basis before you develop an assumption or change assumptions. And I think we need to understand how it's going to affect, and we're doing the 80/20 split right now, or, on our assumption for that. But really, what are, what's the behavior, how will that affect how it grows year-over-year? And that could be something I can adjust going forward.
That's the question.
Nope, that's a good question.
Ready to move forward?
Yeah.
So I guess at this point, I would pause, and I would really ask, ask council, is there any other discussion you need at this time? More importantly and interested in, do you need more information? Do you have other questions that I haven't captured here tonight? Are there other priority interests that you have? Now, remember, you know, we're working towards timeline here of needing adoption, and that's what we're trying to work towards. So having that conversation or sharing that information is, is important to really know how it might affect the recommended budget, and what I need to do to bring changed instrument back to you for adoption.
So a couple years ago, I was talking to Councilmember Colley. We did an exercise very close to the final budget, where some items had fallen outside of the approved parameters, and they were smaller amounts, smaller asks, and the council was able to identify a few items that could be included. So I don't know if there's, you know, that need this year, or if there's a way to have a dialogue of things that didn't make it quite, you know, that were on the border, and if we had some discretionary money, we could move some of those into the improvements. So, and I don't know what they are right now because, you know, that would be, you know, further kind of thing, but looking at that kind of opportunity might be okay. I know we're going to do that again, probably in the fall when you have your final numbers, and if you see that there's an opportunity to either add a capital project or add a smaller project, we'll do that again.
Just something high level, nothing for, you know, just anything immediate, but I think just with everything going on around the world, you know, cybersecurity, I think the, the way we define disaster recovery is really changed in today's age compared to just normally, we think of disaster recovery as a hurricane or tornado. So I think it's very important for the staff and the council to look, as we look at long-term forecasting or projections, is, you know, the kinds of investments we need to make in terms of just, you know, making sure that we're investing in the tools that we need. There are studies out there that show that 45% of virus software, actually, anti-virus software today sold by the top vendors only prevents 45% of cyber attacks. So it's not a problem only for us, it's a problem for every local government in the county. So I just think it's something that we need to think about and be supportive of the administration and our department in terms of what other resources. We've seen in the past, people coming in with plans, but I just wanted to throw it out there as a policy recommendation. I'm not, I don't have anything specific, just wanted to bring that to your all's attention.
So what you're thinking is that if there's additional things that we haven't included that might be part of that list that didn't make it quite in, or, you know, trying to combine those two might be...
Yeah, I mean, just that...
I, I think that's, that's a good point, and I like what Councilmember Shrink last year introduced, that 1% added kind of a thing. If we have that kind of, the only thing I, I ask that, the graph, if we go back to that dip, and then the forecasting and the fund balances, yes, we are getting it, and then we're again going up. We are doing one time, which is needed, but we have all this big list of things which are coming. How do we, everything cannot be, what do you say, a bond, everything cannot be a thing. How, how do we plan small, small items that we can slowly start allocating money towards it in a small chunks or something till we save? It's just something that if we can plan, like we have locked down a transportation thing.
It's a capital fund.
It's, it's a capital fund, but at least if we can, in a capital, if we can sub-allocate, okay, this one, if we do it, then it's locked up to do that. It's, it's a, it's within the capital allocations, that's all I'm looking at, because then you are compelled to use that to that particular thing, then we are locked in to do that particular project.
So I would just caution, you know, I, I think the roads capital fund is a very insightful one because of Morrisville's need for more roads.
Absolutely, that's excellent.
But is there another category that holds as high of value, you know, that we don't already have? Like the parks payment lieu, we have parks, we have roads payment lieu, and it's just what, if we box ourselves in and we create a specific capital category, we can't use it for anything else?
I'm like, I'm not saying, like, it's a fund within the fund, right? Like, that's what it is. Like, suppose, say, we are talking about a public works facility, and we know it's a high-ticket item, if at all, this one. So not saying that it's going to happen right away, but we are just building our mini-fund to, like, whatever it is.
Right.
Or do we go directly for a bond? Or, just an example, I, I don't know anything right now.
Right, but I'm just trying to distinguish if you want to formally legalize that.
Not like, a loosely, informally, loosely fluid, so that...
I think that's, we just covered this.
Yeah, so, so I'll, I'll just, you know, throw some comments out there. So certainly, there are things that departments requested that have not been put into this budget. It's not just a money factor, it's capacity, it's, it's workload, there's a whole bunch of factors that go into putting forth what we recommend. We're trying to execute, not just get money in the budget. So, but there are some things, and, and I'm happy to provide that if you want to. Referring to some of the things that I think Councilmember Rao and Councilmember Garamella are talking about, is with very few exceptions, roads, sidewalks, where they're broad categories because there's lots of needs, we don't just make up numbers and say, oh, we'll put it towards this or that. We need to evaluate, study, and make a recommendation to you about what we need. So there's a whole bunch of things that we're talking about that are in progress, but you'd really be asking me to pull a number out of an air to put in a budget, and, and the chances of success at achieving that number without doing the due diligence upfront isn't very high. So we know we want to perhaps look at our information technology, and I'll bring you a number and a request when we have that. I don't have that now. I think you're talking, we are building capacity to deal with those capital project needs. That's, I think that's the core of how we are approaching this budget since I've been here, and I think since before I got here.
67%.
It's very high.
I mean, that's, it's to, you know, it's to do exactly everything we're talking about.
Execution.
That, that is very true. I meant to say, is like, there's almost impossible for you to get a real number. So what I'm saying is a piggyback, like a cent, like a cent on a thing, you can't make...
We're already doing that.
Yeah, that's exactly.
It's, it's shown, it's illustrated every single, you know, spring. We sit here and there's a monster fund balance.
Every year.
That we...
That's true, and, and, and it, in fact, like, some of the things have to just finish up and then...
So let's, here's what I could offer, is tomorrow, Jeannie and I could get together and make, I'll call it a short list, of things that we would recommend you consider if that's what you want to do.
Exactly.
So that when you, just remembering that our meeting next week is supposed to be public hearing and then work session at the end, so that you can finalize your budget recommendation. And so, but you would have that to have reviewed and talked to each other for the, most of the week before going in. Always wanting to look to make sure that any recommendations are sustainable for the future. It, it, it really doesn't do good to just keep adding stuff if it creates more expense down the road. So we're always looking at that as well.
Yeah, can I, I'll make a comment about that. I think it's worthwhile to see that list, and a short list is fine, so we know what didn't kind of make the cut, but if we're, and refresh my memory, when we did this, because we did put some more things into the budget, but if I recall, we were using, weren't we using fund balance to do that? And I'm not sure I'm, I'm willing to do that this year. I think, as was just illustrated, our fund balance is going to work for us on, on all these projects, and I think I personally would like to kind of leave that... projects, and I think I personally would like to kind of leave that alone in the budget. So I'm not even sure, while it's probably healthy to see a short list, I'm not sure that I'm willing to put any more in.
So, I don't recall it was fund balance, but, you know, I...
Well, they were shaking their head, somebody...
Right, exactly, but what I do recall, is that on the short list was the upgrade of the LED lights across municipal buildings, and we did approve it that, and I was, and I think we, that is a good cost savings over the long term, so it was projects like that, that are not, I would say glamorous or popular, but yet, there was an investment made that has long-term benefits, and to see those, and maybe there are a few of those opportunities that might not be as clearly evident that it was a need, but we could make smaller projects happen, so just...
And one of the things, and I know we're going to catch up later this week, but one of the things we talked about at the May 9th meeting was, is we really do need to develop the comprehensive facilities, maintenance, deferred maintenance kind of plan, like, on our work list, so we do know there's some of those needs. Again, it's not a blank check, we want to show you a plan and a program for sustained commitment to that, if that's what you want to do.
Very good.
Yeah, I'd really appreciate seeing a short list, and I understand your concern, even very conservatively, we have over 300,000, and it seems like some of these things might actually be rolling off before June 30th, and we don't have to do these projects in the first half of the year too, as more money becomes available in our fund balance, and it's looking good, so it'd be just helpful to see the list, I think.
Well, and so don't we do that in the fall? When we get a good look at what our fund balance is, after we get our audit, we have that conversation too, so.
During budget time is a real nice time to sort of really put things forward though, and show our progress though, I think.
No problem looking at a list, but it'd be a really good project, for me anyhow, for me personally.
So I, so to that, I don't have any projects to offer you. It would be nuts and bolts types of things, the projects you've identified are in this budget.
Okay, thank you.
How about the road associated with Wake County Public Works Facility in Cedar Fork? Would we have?
We're at the beginning end of those discussions, we don't have that information.
Do you have a number or anything?
Wouldn't happen this year, we'd need to see, maybe, like with last.
I mean, I believe you'll be seeing some more discussion about that shortly, but it's not a funding request, it's how we might partner together, and that'll be coming to you soon, but we're not at funding stage yet.
One other thing maybe is, this quarter, the town core discussion, we've been talking a lot about design funds for maybe next phases or something like that, I'm not sure if that would be something to think about.
Design funds for?
Just some town core.
Oh.
There might be something that we can advance there.
I don't want to invent, I don't want to invent something that isn't already in the budget, that, no.
It's not complicated.
Right, it's just if something has fallen outside that, so.
I just want to thank you all for the presentation, again, like the mayor said, last meeting, I mean, this has really been condensed over the years, and it's been so much easier to come in prepared, looking at all these different things, so, thank you.
So before the end of the day, we'll send you an email of a short list.
We'll have some dollar values associated with though, right?
No, no.
That's good. I almost thought you were serious.
It's a secret.
We don't need dollars.
Can I ask one more question too, Jeannie? I did not look online, and I've just been using this hard copy that you gave us, but all this information is online for the public as well, right?
Currently online, associated with the briefing item through town council's portal. I will work on getting it on our website, so I've had a few little hiccups as a result of other things, but I will work on that tomorrow.
Yeah, these presentations were literally being copied for you at 5:30, so we have to get these online for the public tomorrow.
Okay, and that's fine, but I just, and I know Michael has said, several of us have said it, this book and all the information in here is incredibly valuable, it is formatted very, it's very easy to understand and easy to read, and there's a boatload of really good information. If you've never looked at a budget before, it is, you could pick this up and you will completely understand what this council has asked for and what staff is recommending in the budget, so it really is, I want to make sure that it's available to the public, so, thank you, it's really very well known.
Thank you.
Have we had any public comments?
No public comments yet, but I will bring those from the portal on May 23rd, so it will close at noon, so I'll be able to tally that and collect it and bring that forward that evening.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other budget discussion before we can move to the next topic? All right, we have a closed session, Steve, if you could take us into that.
Pursuant to North Carolina statute 143.318, got 1183, I move we go into closed session for the purposes of discussing a matter of attorney-client privilege.
Second. Motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I could ask the folks that are not part of the closed session to vacate the council?